Altitude meeting of Tuesday, November 25th. Please all rise for the...
We aren't.
You're right, because we're so sorry. I'm not looking at this. Um, we're doing the adoption of the board focus goal.
You want me to talk some more? About, only about, well, forty-five minutes at this point, or forty minutes. Would anyone like to start off this discussion? Um, I, well, I had just one little change here. I thought we were going to still keep, um, the student achievement, the A part of this. Was I mistaken here?
Well, I saw, the A is sort of simply a preamble, a little...
Introduction.
Int introductory paragraph, which I don't know frankly if it's terribly important, because we're not looking at, I don't think we need the, sort of the excess verbiage about it, as long as we get to what the goals are.
Okay.
That's the most important thing. That's just my opinion. I did take the bullets that we came up with at our last meeting and added a few suggestions of my own that I copied, and I would be happy to pass out. I really, again, as I said last time, I really liked...
Dave, can you put one of these up there, too?
Sure.
I really liked Dr. Noel's, yeah, that, there should be an extra one. But, um, yeah, Nancy, that needs to come back.
Did you put some down that way?
Yeah. There you go.
Here's another. But you don't have any, did you have your last ones?
No. Okay, good. And so I, for...
Sorry, Robin.
For the list that I put together, I put together the four goals that we had agreed on at the top under student achievement. I added one under student safety, that I hope Dr. Hayden will not be terribly upset about. And I also added one for communication. And then I followed Dr. Noel's format for, in order to support these goals in 2009, 2010, the board will, and then I put down my four top priorities. I'm sure that you guys will have different opinions, but this is sort of the format that Dr. Noel was using the last time.
Could you explain a little bit about what you mean by, as measured by the California Healthy Kids Survey?
Well, the students in fifth grade, eighth grade...
Seventh, fifth, ninth.
Is it ninth? Okay, fifth and ninth, and eleven. As you know, we get a report every year. They, they take, um, they take a survey that includes a measure about school safety. As Dr. Hayden has pointed out many times, it is not an ideal instrument. However, it is currently the only true instrument that we have, although we have discussed putting in, or creating our own school safety survey. I think it's, it would be nice to see that happen by '09, '10, but in the meantime, we can use that as a, as a direction that we want all of our schools to go in.
Dr. Hayden, you can come...
I, I commend you, I think, I, as you would guess, I think this is a great idea. One problem, and I, and it's really, I think, a question, and maybe a statement. My recollection is when I looked at two, a couple of years running, that there, there just wasn't a lot of change. And, and I think, I think I've looked for a bunch, a bunch of districts, and it's just, these data tend to be pretty, pretty stable. Do I, am I remembering that correctly, Davis? So, so in terms of, you know, you say, "Yeah," but then you're looking, "Oh, well, I don't see any, any outcome that I can make a, that makes a difference." And I, maybe we could be creative in finding some other way to, to do it. I love, I love the idea of, of having something measurable.
Mm-hmm.
Qualitatively or quantitatively.
Ms. Cordero. I'm wondering, because I, I like that idea, too, but I, I really don't like the reliance on the Healthy Kids Survey for a variety of reasons. But I'm wondering if we could maybe measure it by the, a reduction in the incidences of weapons on campus, you know, when we have found, and I, I know that that's incomplete, too, because...
It's such a small number, too.
We, we, we probably only see a very small percentage of what actually appears. But I'm not sure, I, I'm trying to rack my brain to think of another way we could measure that.
Well, we could look under, the way suspensions, for example, are coded. If we're looking at ones for things like harassment, bullying, physical aggression, things, things like that, we could see if it's coded, and if we could get a reduction in that over, over the course of a year.
If you might use perception of safety, because there are a couple of items in there that talk about, "Do I feel threatened? Have been bullied? Do I have, have I seen weapons?" And those numbers are always larger. And, and the goal might be to, whatever that number is, to get it down. Because it's, I think those numbers are in the twenty percent. Aren't they around twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three percent?
Actually, I agree a few on this one. Healthy Kids Survey, we don't necessarily always agree on Dr. Noel, but in this one, I do agree a few, because the low numbers that we're talking about here would mean that if you're trying to see a, a trend of reduction, it's going to actually go up and down, up and down, when you're talking about the incidents. But perception, perceived safety of, of kids on a campus is something, I mean, a healthy campus at a, a climate is, is probably a better indication that, that we could actually measure and probably get decent results, even get decent results from the kids who are honestly answering the Healthy Kids Survey.
So could I say, "All schools will improve school climate as measured by the California Healthy Kids Survey"?
That would probably be an easier one to do.
Perception of, of student personal safety as measured by...
I'm, I'm a little reluctant in our board focus goals to just talk about the perception of safety when, or the perception of school climate improving.
Well, can you, I wonder if you can identify specific questions on the Healthy Kids Survey that you would then, then list?
Okay. Can't do that right now, but is that something, Dr. Hayden, that you could do for us?
There's this item, there's an item there about being in fights, there's an item in there about having been intimidated, or, or hit, or been beaten up, things like that.
There's probably a good five or six items that could be looked at.
All right. Are they really reliable? I mean, is this really a...
Well, since you're talking about larger numbers, and by the time you start getting larger numbers of students answering it, the reliability is going to go up quite a bit. So I, I would hesitate to say that they're highly reliable, but I think they're reliable enough that you could use them if you wanted to.
What if you changed the item to read, "All schools will improve student safety as measured by specific items on the California Healthy Kids Survey," and then you can go back and list those items, you know, in the next week or two, once they're identified?
That would be very reasonable to me.
Just, I'm, yes, I am, just sort of pondering it. I'm wondering if there are, and maybe this is a question for Dr. Hayden, are there, if there's, are any other measures that we might use besides just what's on the Healthy Kids Survey? Do we have any other measures in place that we could use?
Number of suspensions, or anything like that.
I think that's much too vague.
Nothing I can think of right now.
And keep in mind, my, this point just says until, I, I know this is not ideal, but we don't have a school, a, a district-specific school safety survey that...
I guess I realize, I, I, I think there's a real dilemma, because I realize that the numbers for incidence are small, and would make it, it makes it hard to track a trend over a period of time, because as you say, Dr. Hayden, it would spike and, and drop, and it would kind of be all over the place from one year to another. But at the same time, it seems to me that improving student safety is measured by what actually occurs on the campus. So I'm trying to figure out how to bring that in, um, in a way that has some relevance, because if what we, if, if we're saying we want to improve the safety of the schools, which, I mean, by the very fact that they are, that, we are talking about small numbers, it suggests that our schools are relatively safe already, but if we want to improve that further, what we want to do is see, see a further reduction in those incidences.
But you don't know whether actually, if there's more expulsions, whether it's because administrators are more on, more, yeah, there, and they're paying more attention.
Better policing.
Yeah, better policing. Or whether it's actually, you know, an increase in activity, and, and sometimes, you know, you get a whole bunch of kids involved in one activity, one expulsion activity. Is it activity, or is it this number of students? I'm not sure. I'm, I'm, I feel like I'm poking holes.
Well, because I also...
There's a way out of this, and I think. Did not Cynthia White use a different system to get the same kind of data last year? I forget the name of it.
She uses Zoom, right?
It had a different name on it. It was not actually the one administered by WestEd, it was something that she put together.
Could you say that again?
In an interactive system.
Yes, she had an online system. And actually, it was the Healthy Kids Survey, it was online, though.
But did that not allow for, for a selection of items? And, and my question would be for, for the insertion of new items?
Yes, there was an option this year to do that, but the governor decided to preempt us and fill in mostly extra items with his own. This is something we could try and develop. There's nothing currently that I can think of that's going to answer all of your questions. The Healthy Kids Survey is, has been going for many years, it does have a backlog of data, not the best data, but it's the best data we have. And I think what you're talking about is probably the best for right now, but we probably should develop our own.
Well, how about this, then? That, that item simply say, "All schools will improve student safety." And then down in, "In order to support these goals," we leave in, "Develop a district-specific school safety survey." Okay?
At your pleasure.
The survey could include also interviews with, with the campus safety officers, the YSOs.
We could also do focus groups.
Yeah.
Just take small samples of group kids and talk about them, talk to them. Okay? Ms. Cordero.
Yeah, I just, I'm just concerned about, "All schools will improve student safety." I mean, that strikes me as a throwaway, unless you're going to connect some measurement to it.
And I don't know that safety is the right word, for some reason. To me, that means something different than I think your...
Well, school climate.
Yeah.
Well, climate, trouble with climate then goes into a...
Other area.
Huge, global idea of culture.
Right.
I kind of like that better, though.
Which is very appealing to me.
Yeah. Engagement, in a culture that's engaging for kids, and...
Inclusive.
Inclusive, and clubs, and all that.
Culture of high expectations, of mutual support.
All kinds of things, yes. I like that much better than just safety.
But that kind of goal makes it very easy, at the end of the year, to provide data that demonstrates, "Yeah, sure, we've, we've done a lot of that." So, I mean, it just gets back to that. You know, are we doing something measurable that can be accomplished in a year, and then you can move on to some other measure within that broader category of school, culture, climate?
Yeah, and please keep in mind that, of course, this is just the '09, '10 focus goals. This is one year, so we could have it as it is in place, and then look at it, and then by the next year, we'll have the schools, hopefully have a, a district-specific plan or survey in place. It's, it's not going to be the end of the world if, for one year, it doesn't, it's not perfect.
Okay?
So I renew my suggestion, "As measured by certain, specific items on the California Healthy Kids Survey," and then specify...
I like that idea. I have to do this, but I'm still not sure, certain about safety. I don't like the word "safety."
Yeah, I wish, I was looking for another word there, too.
Safety, to me, means getting to school without getting hurt.
We could call it "school climate." Student safety is "under school climate," but we could call it "school climate."
Security, yeah, as, well, security is, in some ways, better, and in some ways, worse.
You got the computer, look it up.
Is there any other word besides...
Safety or climate?
I, I, I mean, I'd be very happy to call it, instead of the student safety as the overarching title, just "school climate," and then "all schools will improve school's climate as measured by specific items on the California Healthy Kids Survey." And I think that...
Okay.
Dr. Hayden knows which, which ones we want to look at.
Well, then, then you've got a whole nother section of it.
It is, but we're only looking, we've made it clear that, that that's the portion of the, the climate and safety.
You don't want to look at alcohol and drug abuse sections?
Dr. Noel.
Because there, in fact, there's good longitudinal, better longitudinal data. We have that report from the Ram lady.
But that is improving.
I, I, I'm not saying you have to do that.
Already.
Yeah, we could include that.
I guess I'd argue in favor of taking a smaller bite of the apple, and then moving forward.
But with your, if we call it "climate," but we're looking at those particular items, which you are...
Right, yeah, school safety.
And not the broader climate, and maybe next time, another portion of the climate.
Right.
I can deal with that. "All schools will improve student cli," it's, the, the heading over the top is, is "student climate," and all...
School climate.
It's just, "school climate." And "all stu," "schools will improve school climate as measured by the..."
Specific items.
"...on this California Healthy Kid Survey," until the school district survey, safety survey is in place. And then the items that will be under there, I said that very poorly.
Do you want me to repeat that? Yeah, I can repeat it for you one more time.
Please, please say that much better, because mine's all crossed out.
"All schools will improve school climate as measured by specific items on the Healthy, on the California Healthy Kids Survey until a district-school safety survey is in place."
I would just leave off the, after the "until" also, it's one year.
Okay. And the items that'll be under there, will, Dr. Hayden, will...
Can I just make a, a plea for, for keeping in the "until" a school, a district-school safety survey is in place? I think it serves as a reminder for us next year that it was our intent not to continue to use the Healthy Kids Survey, but to develop...
But that's a different board, a different time, you know, and, and this board could change its mind.
Well, we certainly could, but I would, but I think it, I mean, if, if we, if it does change its mind, if we, and if we change our mind, I'd like us to do it with the knowledge that we are changing our minds, and not because we simply forgot that that's what we meant.
I, I think it's fine to keep it.
I would like to keep it.
Do you want to read it back?
It was Kate that was actually reading it much better than I was.
So instead of, instead of the heading being "student safety," it becomes "school, school climate." Then the bullet point is, "All schools will improve school climate as measured by specific items on the California Healthy Kids Survey until a district-school safety survey is in place."
And then we're going to have items under that, which...
I would think that we could leave it that this is going to be determined in...
Yes, by determine.
Working with superintendent and staff.
Okay.
Of which particular items.
Okay.
And we can talk about that at another meeting, but this, this is the kind of thing that hangs on the wall.
Okay. Communication. Up, up, you have a comment before we go on.
They, they do not like to have the Healthy Kids Survey broken up by school sites. And part of that's going to be because the N's going to get pretty small for some of the elementary schools. I'm a little bit hesitant to know what to do about that, if you're saying "schools." You may wish to say "elementary district versus secondary district."
That makes sense.
I think it's okay with all schools.
I think it has to be schools.
Well, then, you're going to have to make a decision on, do you allow such a small N for the separate schools? You, it, it's not, it's, they do not suggest that you do that.
So it's, it's really a, a district-school climate?
Well, I think the issue is...
That's, that's not a goal for anybody.
But I think the issue is, "All schools will improve school climate." The question becomes whether we want to, whether we can then measure it by the Healthy Kids Survey or not.
Well, no, I think it depends on, how do we expect the report to come back to us? Do we then not get the report as an, for individual schools, but we see it at the district level? Each school is going to know that that is their target, and I hope that they know what the Healthy Kids Survey says, but that when we get it at the board, we're seeing an overall picture for the elementary district, and an overall picture for the secondary district.
But do individual sites get the results of their site student surveys?
No.
They get a district...
But they can.
They get a district.
That's up to us, right?
That is up to us.
But if, it seems to me if, if we're going to, if we're going to contradict the, the prevailing wisdom in how to use this for the school sites, that it wouldn't make any sense not to give that information to the board.
Sorry to bring this one up, but you have to wrestle with that. Do you wish to go ahead and do it by school, or do you wish to not? The N's will start to get small, and it's not what they suggest that you do with the Healthy Kids Survey.
Okay. So could we make it that the district will improve school climate? That sounds a little strange.
I, I, to me, that's nothing. That doesn't give anybody at any school, any guidance, any target, anything. Oh, well, I don't have to worry about it, because they're going to get better.
The only way we can have the N be large enough is if we were to do our own survey, and we included enough of the grade levels at the elementary school, so that you could actually not have to worry about the size of the N.
So are you saying that we could do it, it would be easier for us to do it at the larger secondary schools?
Yes.
So could we just say, "All secondary schools will improve"?
Are we, is that recommended, is to do the, each...
I believe by the time you get to secondary schools, your N is large enough that you would probably be okay to do that.
So the elementary school district as a whole, and then each secondary school?
I would just say, "All secondary schools," at this point.
That's where it matters most, ain't it?
Yes, it's very true.
Why is that where it matters most?
Well, it's because our, our secondary schools are where we see more issues with suspensions and, and expulsions.
But arguably because, or at least influenced by what has occurred in the elementary schools.
I, I just think that your numbers would be so small.
Well, that's, that's influenced by what occurs in preschool, you can draw a line somewhere in there.
I mean, I guess I would say, if that were true, then we would see an increasing, an increasing number from elementary to secondary, and we don't. We see nothing, and then secondary. I mean, in the eight years that I've been on the board, I think we've, I've dealt with maybe two elementary expulsions.
Excuse me, but is, is that true of the data, that the elementary schools don't show much, many incidences?
Please know that effective this year, the elementary schools' principals have been instructed to begin to track that up till now, which is why you've not been receiving that data on a regular basis. Second, you may know that for the last couple of years, the consolidated application for categorical programs requires that we survey all of our schools for suspension and expulsion data. That information is reported to the board annually. It's been reported for the last couple of years, so we do have some measures.
Right, we have a, you know, there, there's always a few elementary suspensions. Do you want it to say, Ms. Cordero, "All secondary schools and the elementary district"?
My concern is that when we change the term to "climate" instead of "safety," I thought we slightly shifted from just the issue of expulsions, et cetera, to, I, I know, we don't want to, we don't want to broaden it too far out, but I'm, I'm feeling as though we're altering our goal to fit the instrument we want to measure it with, rather than finding an instrument to measure what we actually want the goal to be.
But that's what the, we're going to do in '09, '10.
And that's making me uncomfortable, because I would, I would like the goal to be, for all schools, to improve school climate, not just secondary schools.
But, but by insisting on school climate rather than school safety, then you leave the specification of what you mean by "climate" to the detailed methodology which you're objecting to. Now, I would go, I would just suggest go back to, "All schools will improve student safety as measured by blah, blah, blah," and then it's consistent and explicit. You may not like it, but it's consistent and explicit.
Well, except that even if we said "student safety," Dr. Hayden just told us that we can't measure, that it would be really inadvisable to measure individual schools by the California Healthy Kids Survey.
He said it was fine for junior highs and high schools.
Is that tru, well, did he say it was fine, or he said it was less inappropriate?
I think he said that in the secondary schools, we have a large enough student population in the seventh grade and ninth grade and eleventh grade, that the data would be useful. But in fifth grade by school, the schools are much smaller, and you're just looking at, you know, two or three fifth grades.
Okay, I, I just want to leave that issue aside for a second. If we wanted to measure school climate in our elementary schools, then how could we do that?
We've been doing that every year with our, we've been working with UCSB. Now, I don't know if the Center for Educational Leadership and Effective Schools is still in place, but we do have the surveys, and they've been compiling the data. There's nothing that's copyrighted with the questions. We designed questions around school culture and many other issues that are aligned to the effective schools, correlates of effective, effective schools, and one big piece is school climate. So it asks kids, you know, "Are you comfortable talking to your teacher? Is an adult on campus that you go to?" Or, you know, those kinds of questions. And it goes to parents, staff, and students, and it's all, at this point, we do it online. Third, fourth through sixth, or third through sixth, I can't remember if it's third or fourth. They have to take it themselves, and we've been doing it online in the computer labs.
So could we say that all secondary schools will, all schools will improve school climate? All secondary schools will, for all secondary schools, it'll be measured by specific items on the California Healthy Kids Survey, and for all elementary schools, it will be measured by the results of the name of the survey? What is it?
It's the effective schools.
By the effective school survey.
Can I just make a quick...
Can I, I'd like to interject something here, I think I have my hand up. There is a luminous literature on school climate research, and I've never attempted to do a review of it, but occasionally I find a piece that's interesting. And, and it's not unusual that in a piece of research, one will develop an index, or a measure, or a set of indicators of school climate. It's almost always, it has, I don't think I've ever seen one that includes much about safety, it has more to do with learning environment. And, and I, and if that's what you're talking about, I...
No.
I don't support what you're talking about. I think we ought to be assessing school climate in that learning-related sense. And I, and, and I have no doubt whatsoever that if we ask Dr. Hayden to do a quick scan of the literature, he could come up with some options for existing measures of school climate. That would separate out this, that would take the confusion out of our discussion, because they're really quite different things. And that would let us go back to Mrs. Parker's initial impetus of being concerned about school safety, and I would like to comment on that in support of it, because I think that's something that the public has intense and current interest in. And, and I think that to have it as a goal, and to have, to find a way to, to express progress on that goal is something that the public wants to know, and would, and would very much appreciate having. And I do absolutely agree about school climate, it's utterly crucial.
Ms. Cordero.
I call it "school culture," but to me, it's one of the major variables that have to do with student learning.
Ms. Cordero.
Well, two issues, but I'm going to address one. The, I'm wondering if, in order to sort of move us along, if we could, once again, tweak the language just a little bit, and say, "All schools will improve school climate as measured by appropriate instruments determined in consultation with the superintendent and the board."
Because we're not there. It's going to, it's going to be a while to get there. And I still think, well, go on.
In which case, then I would like to see an item that says, "All schools will improve school safety."
Because it comes back to...
As measured by, and it's kind of like, "As measured by TBD."
Yeah, I know. "All schools will improve school safety," yeah, we're back to that.
I, I'm not objecting to school safety, I thought that's what we had with school climate. I thought we had changed the language to make it a little bit more inclusive.
Because safety to, it still sounds to me like getting to school and getting across the streets and stuff, so.
Okay, it's, at least, what I like about keeping that in as vague as it is, and as unmeasurable as it is at this point, is because we, we then have the further in order to support these goals. And I do think it's important to tie it in with K-12 gang prevention intervention program and the district-specific school safety survey. So that is, I'd like to have an outcome, as Dr. Noel would say, up at the top.
Okay.
Are you there?
I don't know, I don't know what we agree to. I'm, would somebody like to repeat this at the last, so now, Ms. Parker, would you like to repeat?
Where I, what I hear now is simply all schools will improve school climate.
I'm sorry, I, I, I was, I'm happy with that, but I thought that our objection was that we wanted it to be measured by something.
Right, but I think we've just concluded that, as Dr. Noel said, it would be TBD, and that is not something we wanna put on this document that we can truly agree to at this point.
I thought you had two sentences in there that we were gonna have.
I said, as measured by instruments to be, appropriate instruments to be determined in consultation with the superintendent and the board.
But that, that basically puts into TBD the essence of the issue.
Yes.
And I don't think that's appropriate, I mean, we have to deal with the essence of the issue, instead of delegating the staff to make a political decision. It's a political decision, we're disagreeing politically.
Well, I thought that was what, what in consultation between the superintendent and the board meant.
I mean, there's, there's an obvious difference of opinion, and, and, I mean, I, my opinion is we should have a separate item for school safety and a separate item for school climate. And that's, and that's because I have values and views about each of those. I wouldn't delegate that choice to staff, buried, buried and embedded in methodological discussions about items that are reliable for this and not.
Okay, well, I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying, because I'm just, I'm not addressing any of that, I'm just saying, I'm just addressing the part about how we're gonna measure it. Because there seems to be some concern about whether we can actually use the Healthy Kids Survey to measure individual schools in a way that I thought we were trying to get at for student safety and school climate. And so my goal is just to sort of allow us some flexibility in determining what instruments we're going to use to measure it, while maintaining the language that says we are gonna measure it.
How about all schools will improve school climate as measured by appropriate, and I'm just gonna say district, although it could be something like West Ed, by appropriate district surveys?
I'm, I'm happy with that.
Ms. Parker, I have to ask you. One element of school climate has to do with the feeling of safety. Another, another element of school climate has to do with the feeling of high academic expectations. Another element of school climate has to do with the feeling of togetherness, that we have a great team, and we are all one community. Those are, those are apples and oranges. And this doesn't give any guidance whatsoever as to what we're talking about.
Well, I'm talking about school safety, so I'm.
I think that's gonna be our responsibility, isn't it?
But we, let's do it right now.
You're delegating the staff, Mrs. Cordero.
We need to decide right now. Are we talking about school safety, are we talking about more general climate issues?
Well, it seems to me that all we've talked about is school safety. I'm not sure where the fear comes in that we're not talking about school safety.
If we're talking about it, let's say it. S-A-F-E-T-Y.
Thank you.
Um, suggestion. You have activities listed that would support the goal of trying to improve student safety, developing a safety survey, the gang intervention plan, et cetera. What if the, the, the goal is to develop measures to improve student safety, period, then complete your activities to support the goals, and then go back and determine what measures you're gonna put in place?
So can you read exactly how that would go again?
I just said it off the top of my head, I did not write it down.
It was something like develop, under, it would be under student.
Safety.
Safety.
Mm-hmm. Develop measures to improve student safety.
At all sites, student safety at all sites?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What's the outcome?
The, that is the outcome.
Well, that is the, I mean, you'd have, you would need the information that you receive from the, uh, acti, other activities.
And then?
And then you'd be revisiting it to determine what measures you wanted to use.
So once the measures are in place, then perhaps we can either, for oh-ten-eleven, we say these are our specific tiger, uh, targets on the surveys that we've developed?
Or you learn information from your survey that leads you to believe that it's not something that you wanna pursue.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't think that's what we were getting at. I'm interested, Ms. Malakoff, because you were the one who originally suggested changing it to school climate, not.
I, I personally, I'm sort of missing the, I'm just trying to figure out the rest of our plan here. Sorry. The rest of our plan. And I do, I think climate is more important than safety to me, so I'm not that interest, I guess I'm just more interested in the climate issues.
I'm, I'm just.
But that's a whole nother thing.
I'm just concerned about, we look at, for example, where we have the implement a K-12 gang prevention intervention program, seems like our, there's, well, I guess to me, it seems like climate includes safety, but safety doesn't necessarily include climate. And when we talk about a gang prevention and intervention program, to me, that seems like we have to be talking about climate as well as the more specific safety. And so I don't like the idea of taking, of seeing climate come out of there. I don't mind having safety stay in, but I don't wanna see climate come out.
I guess my, my concern is, once again, it's, it's, you know, agreeing to disagree that Ms. Malakoff's definition of school safety is very narrowly drawn, and when someone says school safety, to me, it means other things, not just being able to cross a street safely to and from school in our secondary schools, or students bringing weapons to campus, or fights occurring on campus, those kinds of things. So it seems bigger, and so I feel like we can't talk about student safety because we're talking about two very different definitions of student safety.
I share.
And I would, and I would add probably maybe a third interpretation of what I understand safety to mean, that it includes those issues of, of on-campus altercations, weapons, et cetera, but that it also, I tend, when I tend, when I think of school safety and a plan for addressing school safety, I think of it as a plan for typically a discipline, disciplinary plan. But when I think of prevention and intervention, I think of it more as sort of an, an engagement plan, a, a plan that has more to it than just discipline and enforcement. And that's why I would prefer to have additional words be, in, it's something in addition to safety, and for me, it's climate, but it, maybe it could be something else, to include, to include those other issues.
So you would propose develop measures to improve student safety and school culture at all sites?
Um, I, I thought we were using school climate.
Sorry.
You said culture.
No. To improve student.
I'm ready to kick you under the table.
And.
But you can't, because of limitations.
And now I'm feeling like we are, we are getting off track too, because by saying develop measures, what we're talking about is actually developing measurements, right? Measurement tools.
I would prefer to go back to all schools will improve student safety and school climate.
I, I agree with you. You, you found the magic moment, for me, anyway.
That sounds a little better to me.
Might I interject here that the national expert, leading expert in this whole field is Dr. Michael Furlong, and he probably has instruments and can help solve all this stuff. So if you guys want to, we could probably pull him in on this.
Well, we were, had this on as an action agenda, and we're not halfway through this page yet. So I, this may not be the time to.
But it's later on the agenda too, so maybe, but as it stands, the suggestion is all schools will improve school safety and school climate, period.
Yeah, that's it.
And we're gonna then come back to this a little later, maybe we'll have a few more, we'll be able to get a little further along if we're so fortunate. We have a five-minute break here, and we'll take our break. We're back from our break. You all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have Vivian Rodriguez here tonight for translation.
Sí, muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
Gracias. We also have headsets for the hearing impaired, as noted on the board here. Announcements of closed session, we have no announcements, no action to report. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, reconventions.
Yes, we have two. You may have heard of the parent project facilitated by Linda Guarania at Dos Pueblos High School. Linda is with us tonight to share information about the ten-week parenting classes that she offers at several of our campuses. Linda, if you'll come up to the podium, please.
Hello. Good evening, buenas noches. I'm very happy to be here and honored that you invited me to come to the board. Wow, a big privilege. I'm so excited to talk about the parent project. I could talk all night, but I'm just gonna have five minutes. As you know, I've been working with families at Dos Pueblos High School, English learners, families and their children, and for, for a long time, you know, parents would come to me all the time and said, what do I do? What do I do when my child's behaving this way? What do I do? How do I help my child? And I'm, was so excited to be able to be part of this parent project, and I went to the training, and somebody donated the funds, and I went to the, to the training, and I was certificated to facilitate these classes, and for the last three and a half years, that's what I've been doing. So I have been facilitating these classes in about seven of our local schools, and I would say maybe about four hundred parents have participated and taken these classes. And as you see, this is one of our last classes that we had here at Colita Valley Junior High School. We had more than fifty parents come every week for ten weeks, they committed, they were committed to come and learn on how to become better parents and help their children. Now, all these classes are held in Spanish, and I wish I could tell you everything in Spanish, because I'm much better in Spanish. But anyway, so the classes are every week for three hours at a time. The parents use, we have a book that the parents follow, and they even have to do homework, they have to go home and do their homework, and, you know, once the parents come and they realize that this is a wonderful tool that they can have to, to be able to help their families. And some of the issues, some of the things that we cover is, we start off by talking to them about the importance, first of all, we, the parents share with them what they would love to learn from these classes. Again, these classes are designed to change destructive behavior in the adolescents. So they come and they, we make a list of the things they wish they could, they, they hope to learn in, after these ten weeks. And so we start off with a list of the things, and then we, I went too far. Then we, we, we start the classes, and we, we divide them up in, in groups of six, five or six parents, and those are the parents that they will be working with for the next ten weeks. So as you can tell, they start really building community among themselves. Because as you know, to, for parents to change the behavior that is destructive for their children, they need three, three things. They need the desire to change the behavior, they need information, because our parents don't, sometimes don't have the information, and then you, you bring in the language barrier and the culture, so they need a lot of information, and also, they need support. Because what the parents tell me is they feel so alone when their children are going through a crisis or in, on behaviors that are disruptive, for, for instance, gang involvement, drugs and alcohol abuse. Now, these are some pictures of our graduations. Now, after the ten weeks, and you know, we cover effective communication skills, we work very hard on building those communication skills, we worked on listening, active listening, we also work on setting, making rules, house rules, and consequences, positive comments because they have to elogiar. It's a beautiful word in Spanish. Elogiar is to praise their children when they do something right. Because a lot of times when they're acting, you know, in the disruptive behavior, we, they concentrate on the negative, but we got to find something, the parents need to find something positive to praise their children. And then they can start working on changing their behavior. One of our big, big things is working on active supervision. Active supervision is very important if they want to change the behavior. We talked about getting to know who your kids hang around with, getting involved in the school, finding out what their homework is, because, you know, not doing their homework is a destructive, is a destructive behavior, because it's like a vicious circle. Once the kids don't do their homework, they feel bad about themselves, right? And also, we, I work with the parents in helping them to navigate the, the schools. Who do they talk to? Where can they go? How to talk to the teacher? How do we work? How do you communicate to the teacher what your goals are for your children in, you know, in school? And so we work on that too. And as they participate in the classes, they start to feel, now, this is a graduation, you can see that lady there is very happy to be at the graduation. They, they begin to feel comfortable about their school. Here they come every week for ten weeks, they begin to really feel like this is their school. And we bring special guests, we bring the resource officers to come and talk to them about, you know, you know, here, they are here to support the parents, to support the kids, they're not just the bad guys, right? We bring people from the community about, to talk about different resources that there's a, that are available in the community, counseling programs for the kids. So we deal with all those things, and I guess what I'm, what the most important thing is the parents begin to realize that they're not alone, that they can, they can help their children, they can be involved in their lives, they can, there is hope for them. And after the ten weeks, you know, the, the parents feel that they now they can, they have something that they can control, they have something, they can control their children, and we learned that they can control their children, but they can control their environment. What is it that they, that the children, their children like, and for instance, you know, we work on, you know, how do you control the cellphone? Don't control the kid, control your cellphone, right? And, you know, you do these things on my list, and the parents come out with a list of things that they want their children to do, and this is very important, because sometimes the parents really don't know, you know, want them to make the bed or clean the room, and yet they're using drugs. But yet, we need to concentrate on what's important. So they make a list of things that are important and things that they want to have the children do, homework, read, you know, whatever, they need to eat better food, and then the list that their children enjoy to do, things that they love to do, and you know, it can come out with five things, like, like that, cellphone, computer, music, friends. And so we work on the parents using their list, using their children's list to help, help them make better decisions. Okay, so if you do the things on my list, you can have the things on your list, you do your homework, and then you can use a computer. So just some things. So after ten weeks, now, there's more pictures. I am so proud of these parents. Families tell me that they feel that now they can communicate with one another, there's no, there's no more yelling, there are no more screaming. And here's a, a mother and a daughter, that both of them participated in the program and graduated on the same day. And so there's, there's, this is one of our programs, there's Kate. And here's a mother and a daughter, both of them participated in the program and graduated on the same day. And so there's, this is one of our programs, there's Kate. This was the summer at San Barbara Junior High School. And here's our new elected board member. And we even have here, we even, one of our Univision, if you know this Spanish channel, one of their administrators took the class. And so now we have free advertising. Every time there's a class, this is Paula Lopez, but in Spanish. And she comes and takes, and does the segment on our classes. So we have a lot of good advertising. So it's a celebration. After the 10 weeks, we celebrate. Here we, we're informed, we have the tools, and we have support. Support from one another. Again, lifelong friendships have been built since, from three years ago. So I could tell you a lot, but this is one of the groups that graduated. And I like to give them a little sunflower, because I feel like a sunflower is, you know, it's a little, it's a happy flower and it's a ray of hope. And sometimes our parents feel very hopeless when their children are into destructive behavior. And with this program, they feel like they have some hope. One of the parents, this is another, oh, my sunflowers. A la Kalina. And this is our last program at Colita Valley. Forty-eight parents received a certificate. And here's another class, another high school. Another one is here. And somebody even brought her dog. There's another group. And they receive a certificate and we have a big celebration. So just to leave you off, one of the parents, one of the fathers, he has 10 children. All their children are all over, from City College to down to preschool. And he would come every week, very quiet. He sat and he did his work. And every week he did his homework and shared the most wonderful things after the class that how this program helped him so much to help his children and to be able to communicate. And when he got his diploma, he raised it up and waved it all around. And he said, "This is the first diploma I ever got in my life." So anyways, that's the Parent Project.
Well, Linda, we thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Empowering parents empowers kids.
Thank you.
And Ms. Guarania, Ms. Guarania, I just have to say, it was so wonderful to go and see how excited the parents were and committed to the program they were. And you were just tremendous at facilitating all their conversations. So thank you.
I just want to say, your spirit is so infectious. And I'm just wanna, I hope, I'm looking forward to how the kids must advance as a result of this. So thank you.
Well, I would also like to announce that we have two board members who will soon be leaving the board. They have served many years on our board, and tonight is their last regular board meeting. How's that? Ms. Malakoff, would you like to come up and join me? Laura Malakoff actively volunteered in local schools while teaching psychology at Santa Barbara City College. School-level involvement led to district-level involvement. And Laura served as a member and also president of the Hope School Board. When Laura was elected to the board in November 2004, she identified three priority areas. To improve academic achievement through parental involvement, to ensure that each child has equal opportunities for success, and promote a diversity of learning options. Laura, thank you for your commitment to these goals and for your leadership as president of this board.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere. You know, Laura said, "I know it's customary to give a gift." And she said, "I don't really want a gift, but what I do care about is books. Books for our libraries, books for our kids." So we do have books for you to sign for our school libraries. And it looks like Christmas down here. And we do have a gavel for the outgoing board president. So you can take that home, use it on Mike and the boys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, Nancy Harder's commitment to the children of this community is well documented. In addition to her volunteer work for several community groups, Nancy worked in the classroom and served on school PTAs. She went on to co-chair the Measure V $67 million bond campaign in 2000. Our current and future students benefited tremendously from her efforts to improve school facilities. And Nancy, I know you wanted to have no big deal made about this, but would you please join me as well? Nancy joined the board in November 2000. She served as the president of the board, member of the Santa Barbara Education Foundation, and Measure V Bond Oversight Committee. We value Nancy, your commitment to implementing high-performance standards, focus, your focus on increasing the numbers of students who complete UCCSU requirements, raising the bar on academic achievement for all students, and improving facilities to address current and future needs. Thank you. And Nancy, we do have a plaque. Oh, there we go. Right side up. And we have more books, because we know you care about books as well.
Actually, I teased Laura, I said, "I don't assume I'm gonna get them."
Thank you. While I'm introducing people, I should-
Can we just say something real quick? Because we're saying private goodbyes and private thank yous. But the tremendous service that you've done for this district will never, it'll never be lost on the students here. And we will miss you. Thank you.
I don't know if you can stand to have all of us say things about you. I know neither one of you really wanted a lot of public comments, but, and we obviously will be saying this privately as well. But I just want to thank both of you. Nancy, you were on the board when I was appointed. And you served as a great mentor and role model for how to be a really exceptional board member. And Laura, we ran together for the first time. It was great working with you. You always brought an upbeat approach to what we were doing and really helped us, I think, continue to see the positive side of a lot of sticky issues. So I want to echo Kate in saying that we will miss both of you. And we definitely thank you for the service that you've given to our district.
I want to say something as well. It is, it is no secret that I've voted on opposite sides with Nancy more often than I've voted with her and Laura. But there's a lesson in that, and I think it's an important one. They are genuine colleagues. And the kind of people I respect, because we can disagree and still have genuine affection for one another. And I read that quite sincerely. Thank you both.
Thank you. Finally, we should introduce our newest board member, Susan Deacon. Susan is here tonight. Susan will be sworn in at our December 9th board meeting, our first meeting, regular meeting in December. Ed Heron could not be here tonight. And re-elected, we have Annette Cordero, who is already on the board. And did you want to go to public comments then?
We have public comments.
We have public comment. We have so many speakers, however, that it will run far over the 20 minutes of time that we have allotted for it. So I don't know if we need to entertain a motion, either to extend the time or to reduce time from three minutes to two.
Do I hear a motion, one way or the other?
How many slips are there?
At this point, we're up to, let me count. Twelve.
Can we make it a 30-minute total time slot and then two minutes each and see how far we get?
Sure. That should do it for two minutes each.
Yeah, it should, if, yeah.
If nobody runs over.
Do we need to vote on that? Would you like to, is everybody okay? No objection? Then I'll just go ahead.
I have reservations always about restricting public comments. Then again, some of you, some of the members of the public may be able to hold it down to two minutes without difficulty. But I think if somebody really feels constrained, that we ought to give them three minutes.
Well, we can always take it on an individual basis and take a vote each time if that's an issue.
Okay. Especially since I took the prerogative here of changing this a little bit with the consent of our lawyer, Nathan Rogers. And I also wanted to include the consent agenda items, because that way, if we could hear the comments first and then decide whether to pull them or not, I thought that would sort of help things along a little bit. So maybe we'll be a little bit more lenient if somebody needs to talk about that as well.
It's all public comment.
It's all public comment, okay. All righty.
I guess I'm on. Eric Hancy, followed by Jenny Kuhn, followed by Marsha Eichelberger.
Good evening. My name is Eric Hancy. And I spoke last week to encourage the board to expand training for special ed aides and directors. And I'm back here tonight to ask the board specifically, what are you going to do next? As I understand it, if we look at our current situation with special ed, it can be summarized basically as follows. Anissa McNeil has resigned her position. The director of special ed position has had at least six to seven people in the last 10 years. Parents have become frustrated by lack of communication. There have been examples presented that represent violations of state and federal mandates. Staff within the special ed department have grown frustrated. There is current litigation, and there are several other potential litigation cases that could be out there. So last week, we had a family come up on the agenda and request that a task force be formed to address the issues that were presented. It was a request to have everybody that has a piece of the pie, so aides, teachers, parents, board members, special ed staff, anybody that is a part of this process. See if we could get everybody together, take a step back and see if we could address what's been going on. So again, I present it to you. What is the board gonna do about this? It's a significant issue. And I think you can tell by, this is the fourth meeting in a row, that you've had a very-
Thirty seconds?
People here. And you can have a large number again tonight. So they're bringing up the issues, and we need to know what's gonna go on. Thank you.
And please correct me if I do mispronounce your name. Jenny Kuhn, followed by Marsha Eichelberger, followed by Cory Bream. I'm sorry, we don't do that.
So, can you guys hear me? Okay, good. So my husband, Paul, was here last week and gave that presentation. And one of our concerns in the special education department is that the Santa Barbara School Board's substitute policy for special education instructional assistance is in direct violation of the law. So we kind of addressed that. The district has told both us as the parents and the Washington administration that the Santa Barbara School District's policy is to not call in a substitute unless the assigned aide is absent five consecutive days. I know I'm repeating a lot of stuff here. But the district has refused our request to provide a substitute in the event that Jacob's regular instructional aide is absent. This request was made to ensure his safety and his emotional well-being, as well as to provide continuity in his day and continued access to the general education curriculum and schedule. So attached are the copies of Jacob's IEPs on September 18th and November 17th, where our requests for a substitute were denied. So I just wanted, I have those in writing. So I also contacted the Santa Barbara School Personnel Office to clarify this policy and was told that there is no board-approved policy for special education aides. So there's a copy of an email from Personnel, and it's on page four in this. So right there, there seems to be a discrepancy within the district. One party is saying that there is no policy, while the other party is saying the aide needs to be absent five consecutive days. So this is part of the frustration as a parent, is kind of this circuitous policy thing. So either way, the district is out of compliance. And the State Department confirmed that to me in a conversation October 24th. And our SEPA board has also confirmed that the district is out of compliance. So I come before you now, asking that the school board please change this policy or lack of policy regarding substitutes for special education instructional assistants in the event of an aide's absence to ensure that the agreed-upon services in the child's IEP are met. So I'm just, I'm asking who can change this policy?
I'll give you 20 more seconds now.
Okay. What will the policy be and when will it be put into effect? And in our presentation, I did make a recommendation based on the Greta Union School District policy. So I would just like to expedite this, and I'm glad that we're moving forward on having a great special ed model and all that good stuff. But I think this needs to be addressed. So is there anyone that would like to commit to changing that policy?
Thank you.
We can actually address you at this point. We're not, we're not allowed to do that.
Okay. Well, will somebody get back to me? Yeah, okay, thank you.
No more speaker slips, by the way. Marsha Eichelberger, followed by Cory Bream, followed by Sandra Shove.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, good evening. I appreciate your time this evening. And, but due to the number of speakers, I will waive my time and make my comments at a future meeting. However, I do have written comments, and I would be happy to email those to you. But I will be here in a couple of weeks. So thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to your email.
Cory, Cory Bream, followed by Sandra Shove, followed by Eva Nyer.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Sarvis and Ms. Swasky, for taking time today. They met with me at lunch to discuss many of these issues. I still think the biggest issue is the committee be formed immediately. I would hate to have an interim special ed director chosen without all the data known and without all the parents having a voice, the instructors having a voice. I think at this point, we realize it's a disaster. If I'm off-base there, I'm shocked. I have a feeling that everyone on the board knows it's a disaster, special ed, right now. And that many of the parents are upset, and many are not present that are upset. So don't think that the few that do attend are the only ones that are dissatisfied. Frequently, you run into circumstances where they just don't want to speak out for fear of retaliation. So being past that, I obviously am speaking out often. I think we need a committee meeting, and we need it soon. And I've heard rumors that you're already looking at someone at the county or something like that. It would be more beneficial, I think, if everyone had a voice and everyone participated together for a change instead of autonomously. With seven directors chosen, we discussed this earlier, there's a problem with the job or with supervision or something. But I don't think the parents are feeling heard. I don't think the schools are feeling heard, based on at least Washington School. I just want to counsel you that choosing a committee first-
Thirty seconds?
Is all that'll work. Going forward and picking autonomously from your bubble, a special ed director for the interim seems crazy. And I think I made that clear, but then when I got to work today, I found out there's some rumors. And I just hope that we're working as a team in the future, and that's really, really important. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sandra Shove, and it's followed by Ms. Nyer. But Ms. Nyer, would you like to go last? Or would you like to go in the middle of? Okay. So it'll be Sandra Shove, followed by Maren Lauer, followed by Paul Kuhn.
Good evening, members of the school board, administration, and staff. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sandy Shove. I am the vice president of the Autism Society of America Santa Barbara Chapter, Chair of the Treatment Subcommittee of the Tri-County's Interagency Autism Task Force, a founding member of the Alliance of California Autism Organizations, and a host of other things, including Adams Site Council and the EPAC. I have three children, one of whom has autism, obviously, and two of whom are students in the district this year. Next year, all three of them will be district students. I am here tonight to voice my concerns regarding equal access and equal representation in the special education department. Last week, Howard Fullfrost of Fagan Friedman and Fullfrost, which is the law firm currently on retainer for the Santa Barbara School District, discussed the services he provides, even in cases where the child is not represented by council- even in cases where the child is not represented by council. Dr. Noel expressed strong concerns about this apparent inequity of representation, and Mr. Fullfrost responded that parents without means to obtain their own council have access to free services via public agencies. As a special education parent and as a lay advocate in private practice, I must ask, where are these services? And how is information about them made available to parents? I have walked the autism journey in Santa Barbara for almost nine years and have yet to interact with anyone who has received such services, let alone heard anything about them. Special education due process actions are unique among legal processes. To my knowledge, they are the only area of jurisprudence where a single party, parents, are expected to pay the costs on both sides of the dispute.
30 seconds.
If I file for due process, my tax dollars pay for the administration against whom I bring the action, for the attorneys and consultants the district brings in to fight against me in court, even for the cost of preparing and delivering documents to support the opposing case. If we go to mediation or alternative dispute resolution, my tax dollars pay for those professional services as well. All this in addition to shouldering the direct burden of obtaining my own representation, paying my own experts and advisors, and making my own photocopies. Your money is really my money, and I pay you to fight against me as I advocate on behalf of my child. I'm going to edit to the end and I will give you copies of a more expanded presentation and attachments, but one final comment.
Ms. Smith, we do not do that.
No, it's fine. One final comment. Several years ago, I became acquainted with a special ed teacher who was completing her PhD at UCSB, Tracy Gershwin Mueller. The topic for her dissertation was conflict prevention and dispute resolution in the IEP process. I asked her what the thrust of her research revealed, and she stated simply, "Give the parents what they want." She went on to explain that taking this approach, if the requested interventions work, then the problem is resolved. If they don't, then the school has established its goodwill and intent to serve the student by listening responsively to the parents, and the trust built then encourages the parents to give more serious consideration to the proposals of the school district. In either case, the point of impasse, as Ms. McNeil described it last week, is averted entirely, leaving no reason for either side to proceed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ock.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Marilyn Lauer followed by Paul Kuhn followed by Kate Smith.
Hello, good evening. My name is Marilyn Lauer and I'm a special education teacher here in the district. I've been employed here for eight years, and I've worked both in the secondary and the elementary district. And I spent one year as a behavior and inclusion specialist in special education, itinerant throughout the district, and was involved in many, many schools and worked with many teachers and many IEP teams that year. I'm here to present concerns from my point of view that have been present and overwhelming for most of these years that I've been employed here as a special education teacher. I have a few listed, but this is not a comprehensive list. I only posit it to you to represent a desire to communicate to the board that a thorough review of the administration, including people responsible for decision-making, for advising, for hiring, recruiting, training special educators and administrators in special education, needs to move forward, and it needs to be a transparent process and a collaborative process that's reflexive in nature. Some of the pressing concerns for me, working under seven special education directors in the last seven years has effectively been for me a lack of leadership and has presented confusion of philosophy, policy, and best practices. A lack of job descriptions, particularly as it applies to the severity and the type of disabilities in the student population, and mixed caseloads in classrooms-
30 seconds.
-have caused hardship in properly serving individuals. Trainings and in-service have been generic and not always pertinent, taking time away from necessary duties. Inadequate staffing of both credentialed and classified staff has caused undue hardship to meet timelines and to provide adequate specialized academic instruction. Particularly for me, misalignment of teaching assignments with credentials has placed teachers in positions that do not maximize their skill set. This list is not inclusive, but it is indicative of concerns of the special education staff, and I felt compelled to bring forward that point of view as well. So, I thank you for your time.
Paul Kuhn followed by Kate Smith followed by Jean White.
Evening, Madam President, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and thank you for the opportunity to speak before 10:30 at night. That is much appreciated. What I'd like to talk about is what I think, the tremendous opportunity that we have before us to stop the revolving door that has been the director of special ed here in Santa Barbara School Districts and is excited as I am about the possibilities lying before us. I'm troubled, I had a conversation that I will relate to you, that I had this week, with someone who is involved in special ed, who I trust and admire both personally and professionally. And I asked a simple question. I said, "Do you know of anyone who is, you know, I'll call it within the system, who you think is qualified to be the special ed director?" And she said, "Unequivocally, I do." And she said, and I quote you directly, she said, "This person would not touch the position with a 10-foot pole." And I asked, of course, why, and the response I got is that this person would not take the position because she would fear that there would be continued lack of support for the director from the top. And unless I'm mistaken, the top is all of you in this organization. And so I think that it's very important that all of you make it very clear to anyone that you are talking to as a potential special ed director, that you are going to give them their unequivocal, or your unequivocal, support.
30 seconds.
Thank you. There was something else I was going to talk about, now I'm drawing a blank. Oh, yes, thank you. Just echo what a couple other people have talked about and what I talked about last time, which is, we would really like to see you all establish the special ed task force and again, bring all the stakeholders together. And I think out of that, you're going to get a lot of very constructive ideas, and I think that that'll go a long way to righting what has been wrong in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Smith followed by Jean White followed by Kristi Holm.
I'm suffering from post-traumatic stress syndrome. Marcia Eichelberger is my rock. 10 years ago, she was involved in a due process against Marcia McClish, and I was beginning my complaint, which became a landmark lawsuit. And she said, "Kate, tape everything." I said, "Mrs. Eichelberger, you're scaring me." She said, "Kate, tape everything. They are evil." And she was right. And I, I'm now under the supervision of Dr. Bella Schimmel, who saw me when I was 13 years old. And this whole effort of all these parents who have gone through what I went through alone and are now banding together for their children and for our society, and they are coming to this podium in the face of contempt and efforts to humiliate us, has sent me over the brink. This board and administration is derelict in duty.
30 seconds.
You have lost sight of the educational mission. You refuse to listen to us. You have a propensity for self-aggrandizement, and you have a sense of invulnerable status. There is no complaint procedure in place. There is no due process. This is an autocratic system, and our society demands that you attend to your oath of office and to uphold the Constitution of the United States. You've already said everything I've written down. I want to thank all the parents who are here. I want to thank all the other parents who have come to defend their children.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Jean White followed by Kristi Holm followed by Lynn Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name is Jean White. I spoke here a couple of weeks ago and about a situation for my son at open alternative school, and that situation has improved, and I'm very happy about that. So, why am I back? As a professional in the community, I work with many families with children with special needs, and I'm very aware that some of their concerns have not yet been heard, and I want to stand with other families to add my voice. I, I want to speak about a phenomenon that I notice quite a bit is that when a family first finds out that their child does have a diagnosis, they may know at birth, they may know when that child is a toddler, one of the greatest fears that they have is of diminished expectations. They are afraid that everyone who works with that child is going to say, "Oh, gosh, it's just the diagnosis," or "What can you expect?" Or, "Oh, well, that's all we can do." And I think you have in this district such wonderful, talented teachers and professionals, and so many people that help support families and fight against this, this fear and show them that that isn't the case. We're with you. And I feel like so many other people talking here tonight, that you do have the opportunity to make sure at this juncture that, that moving forward, there is a culture of respect.
30 seconds.
There's a culture of respect and of valuing and of showing families in the way that you interact with them and in their contracts that you have with them and in these dealings that, that they don't have to worry about that, that everyone is still together, united, and that they don't have to worry about diminished expectations. So, I, I think a task force, like many others have said, would be wonderful, and I hope that it will be taken seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Holm followed by Lynn Rodriguez followed by Eva Nyer.
Hi. Speaking in front of people is really not my comfort zone, so this might be a little weird. My name is Kristi Holm. My son is seven and he's in second grade. In his IEP, it states clearly that he is to receive two one-half-hour sessions of speech each week. This is the 14th week of school, and he should have received 28 sessions so far. To date, he has only received three. That is unacceptable. This is in non-compliance with his IEP and is illegal. When we go into our IEP meetings, it is with good faith that it will be upheld. So far, that has not been the case. I am now in communication with an advocate, and we use their services to get our son's needs met. We would have preferred not to go this way, but what are our options? This is it. 14 weeks is way too long for our son to be ignored, and now is the time for action. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Rodriguez followed by Eva Nyer.
Madam President, members of the board, staff, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I just want to lend my voice to the discussion about these issues. I've been following what's happening with a lot of concerned parents. Some of you may know, I'm a former member of this board, and I am a parent of a child with special needs, who's Blair at La Cumbre Junior High. I'm watching with great concern what's happening with the situation. I think we've had years where it's been rough before, and we really faced some severe challenges, and it's going to take a community-wide effort, I think, to work with the district to help resolve some of these issues. I serve on the Board of Directors of the Alpha Resource Center, working very closely on a lot of community issues with that group. I would like to offer the support, my own support, the support of Patty Moore, who's a parent as well as an Alpha staff member, and other members of the community that I've worked with to join with parents. I've been a former member of the CPAC Committee, which was in existence for a number of years. Sadly, that sort of dwindled over the years and partly because of the lack of staffing to really provide the support it needed. That was a great outreach opportunity, a great opportunity for parents to talk to one another, to talk to staff, to get information and to go back and forth. I have all the files from those committee meetings that I was involved in for maybe four years before I was on the board, three years. We made lots of recommendations for parent outreach, for support from the district. Unfortunately, due to lack of staffing, many of those things never got implemented. I would like to see those come back to the surface. I would love to see the district hire-
30 seconds.
...a half-time position to do parent outreach. I know this is a long road. There's a lot of difficult situations that you're facing, but I support what a lot of the parents have said. We need to form some sort of a community-wide effort that will help address these things, and I encourage you to reach beyond just the school district, but to other members of organizations in the community to help you do that.
Thank you. Ms. Eva Nyer.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight just to let you know that we have a group of parents that took a field trip to the board meeting. About twice a month, our Padres Adelante, ELAC, English Learners Advisory Committee Group meets to cover such topics as the system of a school district, a school site, and rights that parents have, and how to work with the system. And we took a field trip just to learn more about how a school board operates. So, I'd like to recognize our Padres Adelante members who are in the back of the room and thank them for coming to the meeting tonight.
And that's the end of public comment.
Madam Chair, if I could just make one quick comment.
Please.
And that is to the parent who was looking for input from board members, asked a question. And I just want to share with, with members of the public that board members don't comment on public comment, and it's often interpreted as rudeness or arrogance, and part of the problem is public comments not agendized. So, if there were other parents, other community members who are interested in an issue that's being raised by someone at public comment, and we engage in a discussion with that person, the rest of the public has been effectively denied their opportunity to come and participate in that discussion. So, I just wanted to share that with you, so you know why there's no response to public comment.
Thank you, said that well. Acceptance of donations.
Move to approve of the appreciation.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
The consent agenda.
Superintendent's comment.
Superintendent's report, you put that here, I'm sorry.
Superintendent's report.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah, I do have a couple items to report on. In fact, I'd like to start with special education. We've heard from parents about concerns about special education for a number of successive board meetings and tonight. As you know, our Director of Special Education is leaving the district. We will be undertaking the following. Number one, in the short-term, Associate Superintendent Robin Swawski is working with staff on the transition plan so that people know where to go and how to get things done. Secondly, our intention for now is to bring in an interim director to work with parents, to analyze our needs, to hire new leadership in special education this spring. But more specifically, number three, we have started meeting with parents, and we will meet with parents during December, and we'll formulate a plan for ongoing meetings and for ongoing parent input. I don't know yet whether it will be a single parent committee. It could well be a parent committee of 2,000. In fact, a single task force may be the most efficient way to proceed, but for now, I don't think a single task force would allow us to hear all the voices that do need to be heard. There are many people who aren't here tonight, but, but we will certainly be moving towards some sort of a structure so that we get ongoing input on a regular basis. Four, we will ask for an evaluation and analysis of special education, which will include our special education procedures, our trainings, our class inclusion models, effective staffing, and the configuration of administrative positions, responsibilities, and accountability. There are other districts that have other people in these roles and who are structured differently from ours. This analysis must consider problems that we have had in special education and must have both parent- have both parent input and staff input. And frankly, at this point, we have not received much staff input. There may be a chance of bringing in an interim person who, in fact, does have the skills to conduct an analysis, but no decisions have been made. We will return, number five, we will return to the board with a long-term strategy before hiring any permanent administrative positions. And number six, we heard last Tuesday night that by policy, we do not provide substitutes for aides of students who have one-on-one aides unless the substitute is absent for five days. I cannot find such a policy. Obviously, it has been said to people. Obviously, we're doing that. I see it written in an IEP here. Wednesday morning, the morning right after our board meeting last Tuesday, I directed staff to see that substitutes for one-on-one aides are readily available, and we will be working with site administrators to ensure that that will happen. These are IEP services. IEP services must be delivered. Now, some of these things cannot be done immediately. That's one thing that does need to be done immediately. Some of these things cannot be done immediately. Others will take longer. Realistically, we cannot expect to achieve everything in the next four months or even by the end of the school year. We want to make sure that our students have excellent programs, the programs that they deserve, and we will not be satisfied with less. Secondly, I'd like to talk about the gang outreach working, worker steering committee. I've formulated a steering committee and have invited the following people to join us in planning for the prevention and intervention of gang violence. From the community, we have Sol Serrano, Community Action Commission, and Los Compadres. We have Vince Castro, who we have invited from All for One. We have invited Dr. Victor Rios, UCSB Sociology Department. We've invited Jacquelineinda from Esperanza. Sergeant Bernie Gaona, Santa Barbara Police Department and Youth Services. Ben Romo from the Santa Barbara County Education Office, the Center for Community Action Education. Lenny Quoc, Santa Barbara County Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Services. Board members Annette Cordero, Kate Parker, Michael Gonzalez on our staff, our Director of Student Services and Compliance, and myself. The question was raised at our last board meeting about whether this is to be a board committee. Board, if you would like this to be a Brown Act committee, it can be. One of our board agenda items later this evening is about the prevention of gang violence. Since a major task of the steering committee is to plan prevention curriculum and prevention strategies, we could talk about this at that time, or I can put it on another board agenda. Also, in tonight's announcements, we were just notified that we have opened an evacuation center at Santa Barbara High School. As you know, we are worried about flooding in this community, especially in areas affected by the gap and the T fires. We do have some wonderful events coming up in the days and weeks ahead at Santa Barbara High School. The acapella and magical singers under the direction of Phil McLendon will perform on February 5th, 6th, and 7th at St. Anthony's Chapel behind the old mission. The downtown holiday parade will take place Friday, December 5th. Many of our bands and drill teams will perform. San Marcos High School's marching band will hold a free community performance of Arachnid on December 9th at 7:00 PM. Angulita Valley Junior High will hold a geography bee on January 8th. We hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving holiday with family and friends this later week, and we'll all be back at it Monday morning.
We... We do have one public comment on the superintendent's report. Kate Smith. Before we do that, there's been some evacuations this evening. Is that correct?
Yes.
Maybe we should announce this to this group. They may want to know that. One second.
I understand that the evacuation areas or the T fire area... Well, Barbara, go ahead.
The shelter was open this evening, but at the time that I spoke to Principal Caprito about an hour ago, there weren't any evacuees there. So it's been, you know, basically, it's open, but I don't know the status of this moment. But an hour ago, there weren't any yet.
Oh, okay. I thought we had... Thank you. Kate Smith.
I'm here because Gibraltar Road received its evacuation orders at 6 o'clock. The superintendent is the supervisor of the special ed director. There were three special ed directors, Wally Olson, Jeff Gabrielson, and Joanne Pulli, who left this district because they refused to compromise their ethics and their integrity. Anise McNeil was working under Dr. Sarvis and the Selpa Coordinating Council, which has a direct supervising effect on special education directors. Anise McNeil gave a letter of resignation that will be placed in her file. I am asking that... You don't want me to talk about Anise? I'll wait. Okay? I am asking that there be an evaluation of Brian Sarvis, and I'm asking that the public would be called to give their evaluation of his performance. Your evaluation of him in closed session is remiss without the public's...
I think you're getting off the agenda item here. This is the comments on the superintendent's report.
Well, you know, he was talking about special education, and that comes under the superintendent's purview. And it would be psychotic if you continued to allow Brian Sarvis to spin his report so that he does not take any responsibility for the situation that has outraged the parents and caused incredible trauma and suffering in our school district. Thank you.
We're up to the consent agenda. Yes?
I'm very concerned, as I'm sure are all of the board members, with the situation in special education. But I'm also concerned with the scenario that Dr. Sarvis sketches about what he's going to do about it. And part of that is that nowhere in there do I get any sense that there is going to be a truly objective view of what goes on and what has gone on. Basically, the personal pronoun "we" was used throughout. This is what we're going to do. Now, I understand normally a superintendent would say what she or he is going to do in response to a situation. But I think this situation rises, has gone beyond that, and that the review that has to be done, has to be done independently of the superintendent, because indeed, he may be part of the problem. And so I'm concerned when it gets down to the question of a review or a task force, who's going to be on that? Who's going to be in charge of it? And will it have external expertise that is truly independent? I think it should have parents. It should have teachers.
Dr. Noel, this is going to make me a little nervous in that we're not, we're kind of off the agenda.
I'm commenting on the superintendent's report. I know you don't like it when I say things that tend to be very direct, but I happen to be a very direct person, and I have my right to say these things.
We're going to end up being... I'll be direct then. We're going to be off the discussion. We're going to all want to discuss this, and then we're going to have a problem. What happens if every single person wants to make a 15-minute talk?
Are you ruling me out of order, Madam President?
I'm trying to keep you...
Short of a ruling, which I will appeal, I will continue.
As counsel, I think the point Dr. Malakoff has tried to make is that per the agenda, there is to be no board discussion on the superintendent's report. There's an opportunity...
Where does it say that, Mr.?
It's item D8. There will be no board discussion except to ask questions and refer matters to staff.
I believe that any item on the agenda is subject to comments. Certainly, and the public, we've already established that the public has that right. Now, why would a board member have a lesser right than the member of the public?
While I'm advising as district legal counsel that the discussion be curtailed and brought back as a conference agenda item if need be to comply with the agenda and any requirements of the Brown Act.
Well, I'm... Madam President?
I'd like... Could you just spend another 15 seconds to 30 seconds on this, and then we'll go on?
I would like to call a point of order, which I think supersedes additional comments.
Thank you.
I believe that on our agenda where it says there will be no board discussion except to ask questions or refer matters to staff, and no action will be taken unless listed in the subsequent agenda, that that's somewhat of a contract with the public. And while this is a discussion that I think we absolutely need to have, we need to have it appropriately agendized so that we can fully engage in the discussion and not have to constrain ourselves to what doesn't violate the Brown Act. I am very concerned that, I think we are dangerously close to violating the Brown Act with going into this discussion when we've specifically stated we won't have a discussion, given that our attorney seems to have indicated that that is correct. I would like to suggest that we...
I am not asking for a discussion. I'm asking for my right to reply and comment on the superintendent's statement.
She called the question, and I have to move on. I have to move on.
Wait a minute. Called what question?
You're out of order.
I didn't know there was a more...
I made a point of order.
You're out of order.
And you're ruling, Madam President?
That we move on.
Are you ruling me out of order?
Yes.
Okay. I appeal the ruling of the chair.
And that means...
That means everybody votes on this issue.
Okay. All those in favor of moving on?
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion? I'm sorry, I need a motion.
Actually, what I'd like to do, rather than making this more contentious than it already is, is ask Dr. Noel if he can rapidly get through his comments in the next, you know, one minute, and then we move on to, you know, putting an item on the conference agenda as suggested by Mr. Rogers, as long as Dr. Noel is comfortable that he's responding directly to Dr. Sarvis's comments.
I'm responding, yes, and I accept that.
Did everybody else... I mean, we still had a motion. If somebody wants to make a motion, they're allowed to.
Was it seconded?
No, I'm waiting for it. There was no motion. Okay, then I guess everyone agrees. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm just not sure of the protocol that we're following. If you want to make a motion to... We had a point of order. You ruled that the point of order was valid, that we were to move on. It was appealed, and then what...
Point of order simply gives you the right to speak.
And then what happened with that appeal?
I asked for a motion, whether we can, anybody wanted to make a motion to stop him from speaking anymore?
You ruled that I cannot speak. Okay? That is your prerogative as president.
So barring a change of that appeal...
It is my right then to appeal the ruling of the chair.
And so I thought then I had to...
And I made that appeal. Now, that's where we go.
I will frame it as a motion. Dr. Noel speaks for one minute directly to Dr. Sarvis's comments, and then we put this discussion on a conference agenda.
Do I hear a second? No. In that case, we move on. Consent agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? The minutes we have to pull.
I'd like to pull E3 and E6.
Anything else?
And E8. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It was E1, 3, 6, and 8. And the motion was for the remainder.
Move to approve the remainder of the items.
And I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. We're F1, approval of the Community Day School for expelled 7th grade students.
The board had had a previous discussion about expelled 7th and 8th grade students and what could be done in the context of Community Day School to be able to serve these students. The board was particularly concerned about 7th grade students and asked staff to take a look at that, bring back a recommendation, and to present that recommendation is Robin Sowoski, our Associate Superintendent for Education.
Okay, thank you. You can see from your agenda item here in the background that Michael Gonzalez and I have met quite extensively with Kathy Abney, the principal of Aquesta, and also with other staff members. We reviewed the first proposal, or not even a proposal, but a study on this proposal to have 7th grade students enrolled in Community Day School. And the first one involved housing. After looking at the number of students who typically are brought to this level in 7th grade, we found that the data showed it's like three to seven students a year. We looked at the current housing situation and realized that we really would not have to have additional portables at this time. So that, you know, is no additional cost, and it would work. And we also agreed that, and we've had this discussion before, that the 7th grade students who are, go through the expulsion process, and maybe ultimately that is their situation, they are really not a lot different than many of the students in Community Day. They have the same types of needs and services required, and those are talked about a little bit here. So instructional needs, special education has been a big need with Community Day School for quite a while. And so that is something that our data shows, that many of the students who end up in that situation do have needs with special ed, and we need to support that in a bigger way than we have. So it's a .5 special ed teacher at this point. That would be the max. Now, right now, you wouldn't start out with a .5 unless the students that are in that program, their needs are there. And of course, that's driven by IEPs and that process. The other administrative needs are currently, there is a full-time counselor and an intern The school has thought for a long time, and I believe Michael Gonzalez and I agree, that the administration piece is really an important part of that, and a full-time administrator at that site, assistant principal, is really needed. And so the current counselor, actually in the room tonight, that whole position would move to an administrative assistant principal piece, and the cost of the district actually is not anything, because that, with the administrative internship and all added to the counseling position, it doesn't represent an additional cost. Then the other additional need on the backside is the student support services, and we talked a lot about this. There is a youth service specialist that is there. The counseling piece of this is really a very important part of it. And we looked at, a 40% counselor would be the need at this point, which represents about $25,000. So when you add that up, as the memo states, the additional cost is about $55,000, given this scenario, given serving all the students that could potentially be in this situation and be enrolled. So at this point, we don't have those students sitting there waiting, but it would be, so the cost, of course, wouldn't happen immediately. It would just be as students are enrolled, and that would be the cost that could be put in place. So in looking at this and our discussions previously about our students that are 7th graders not being served appropriately in El Puente, which is, you know, is really the place where our 8th graders and beyond go, and in talking to Cecilia Molina, the principal there, it's very clear that our 7th graders need a different kind of setting, and our current CDS Community Day School seems to be an appropriate placement for those students, and we believe we can provide the services that they need to get them back on track and really provide a different kind of service than El Puente can, similar but different with that age level. Similar but different with that age level. So our recommendation is to look at this and, and go forward with it.
I wanna, I wanna thank you for, for bringing the recommendation forward. And I see Ms. Abney and Mr. Trina in the audience, I don't know if they have any comments. But this is fantastic and, you know, after a site visit to El Puente, you know, Ms. Molina said that the seventh graders are, are too young to really take the kind of responsibility that they need to take for their actions and they're out of sync with the rest of the, the students there and that it takes much longer to work with them as opposed to the, the students who are even just a little bit older. I may have spaced out for one second. And my question is, how do you avoid the cost of the additional counselor, the additional counseling time until you actually have students in place? You addressed that with the administrative assistant, but.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Exactly. You mean, we, as far as hiring?
You start the school year in September and maybe you don't have any, I mean, this year we happen to have several seventh grade expulsions at this point in time. But let's say you don't until, I don't know, December. And so would you have to pay for that counseling time up through then in order to have that person available when the students finally appear?
That's a good question. I believe that the school and all the students actually that are already there, whether they're expelled or not, need that combination of a strong administrator and a counselor. Now, we happen to, you know, sometimes that can come together with experience with counseling in an administrator, but then you need to separate that out and you need a counselor and you need an administrator.
Let me address that as well.
Oh, please, go right ahead.
This is a common problem in, in Community Day School and continuation programs where we often gain more students through the year. You simply have to staff at the beginning of the year around the expectation so that you're ready for those students. Because you do want the consistency in, in those people knowing the program, knowing students and then being able to pick up the new students as they come in.
I, I have no issue with that. In fact, I think it's kind of beneficial for the other students to start out the year and have the additional counseling support. My concern is, is that usually when we, often when we have seventh graders, it's usually a group of seventh graders. And so I don't, I would want that counselor or that administrator to have enough time remaining in their schedule. You know, work expands to fill the time available and then, you know, lo and behold, you've, you've received four additional students. And so I wanna make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position where then you're gonna have to be coming back and say, you know, we need more counseling time or more administrative time. That's.
Yeah, you know, that's, yes, we, we wouldn't know exactly how that would, how that would play out. I mean, we planned this, talking with the administration and trying to balance what we could actually put in place, what would serve the students best. And, I mean, you know, the optimum, of course, would be a full-time counselor and a full-time administrator. That would be great. We know that we can't do that right now.
The Community Day School is for seventh and eighth graders, sorry. So if, if a student is expelled in seventh grade, in the middle of seventh grade ends for a year, they would just stay in that program, is that correct?
That's, that would be the intention. Of course, you know, as, as things happen and students change and different placement may, may be appropriate, but at this point, that's where we would plan.
Is there some sort of probation or something that if they weren't, I don't know, they were?
Well, ultimately, any expulsion decision is up to the board.
Yes, yes.
For, for whatever kind of placement that you chose to make, whether it was CDS or whether it was El Puente or some other arrangement.
But the intention is not to expel to, to Community Day School for seventh grade and then when they become eighth graders to move them over. That is not our, our intention, is that, or it could be.
It wouldn't be my intention, but, you know, I won't speak for, for, you know, future board actions, but you know that you have a tremendous amount of latitude when you make those kinds of decisions. And now it seems to me you have another tool in the arsenal for meeting the needs of students who get into trouble.
Makes sense. Go ahead.
No, I just wanna say we have public comment at some point, so just.
I just had a really quick question. Given that the students would still be attending a district school, are they considered to have a suspended expulsion? Or are they, are they, I mean, I'm, I'm wondering how, just the very specifics of that.
Looks like Michael Gonzalez wants to respond to that.
The law is very clear. It permits students who are expelled to attend a Community Day School. In fact, the legislation that created Community Day Schools specifically called for expelled students within the district to be sent to those schools. So we would continue the practice of, if the board deemed it appropriate, to expel a student, but rather than to send them to the, to El Puente, they would be sent to our Community Day School.
So if this, so then, once the student had fulfilled all the rehabilitation plan, would they then be eligible to return to one of the comprehensive junior highs?
That is correct.
Or would our expectation be that they would remain at Community Day School?
No. The law requires that we consider, if a student has met the rehabilitation plan, we then would permit the student, depending on the individual circumstances, to consider returning back to an eighth grade at any of our schools, except that it has been board practice that the student would not be permitted to return to their home school, i.e. the school that made the original recommendation to expel.
Okay, thank you.
Shall we take public comment at this time? Kate Smith, followed by Lane Wheeler.
At the board meeting, August 26, Kathleen Abney said most of her students were special education and she didn't have special education personnel. I said this was non-compliance to, non-compliant to IDEA and ADA and Brian Sarvis said the district is compliant. This is the school-to-prison pipeline. It is a national issue, it is online. Please read dismantling the school-to-prison pipeline at NAACP.org. And Marion Wright Adelman and her Children's Defense Fund has issued a call to action. These students are supposed to be tested, diagnosed and treated for learning disabilities. Instead, you expel them for truancy, zero tolerance and school failure. You talk about appropriate placement. You talk about providing services. You are talking about our children. They need our help, not punishment. Seventh graders are thirteen years old. You are sending them away from their friends, away from what should be an engaging environment, a supportive and cooperative environment, but you refuse to deal with the school, climate or culture as you were talking about in your board focus goals. Democratic education is engaged, relevant and socially conscious curriculum in a supportive and cooperative atmosphere with an embrace of diversity, an accommodation for different learning styles and a fair distribution of funds. La Coesta is a one-room classroom. It is surrounded by a chain link fence. That's better than El Puente, which has barbed wire. There are no electives, no activities, no clubs. You are criminalizing our children.
Thirty seconds.
I hope, as, I hope, as the consciousness of our society rises to fight this institutionalized racism, I hope you are brought to justice. You have no understanding of democratic education. You have no understanding of the development of the teenage brain. You are damaging our children's minds, bodies and spirits. They are the future of our society and I am republishing John Snyder's seminal document that he wrote in 1993 that says just that, our society depends upon our schools.
Thank you.
Lane Wheeler.
Good evening, Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association. And just a couple of questions that I'd like you to ponder. I'd like to know the source of the determination that this plan is constituted, how it was constituted. There are a couple of questions that I, I think need to be answered. One, the inter, administrative intern and counselor position. I'm unaware of that position. I believe, my understanding was that that administrative intern was an administrative intern. Now, whether that person did counseling in addition to that would be, you know, I think a determination at the site based on the need. I don't believe that administrators are barred from doing any kind of counseling and probably do so on a daily basis. But I am concerned that a counselor's position would be eliminated and replaced with an administrative position without the proper negotiation on that aspect of this proposal. I, I don't fault the proposal, it looks to me a well-founded proposal. I just believe that there are some technical difficulties that we need to make sure that we have delineated and completely adjudicated prior to the passing of this. So I would like those aspects of this approached and that makes sure we have clear determination that we're not violating any, any of our contract in terms of placement of those personnel. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if, if Dr. Sarvis or Ms. Sowoski has a response to the concern that, that Mr. Wheeler raised. It's two different people, first of all, right? Okay.
Oh, yes, it's, it is two different people, right.
Well, no, no, I think that Mr. Wheeler is referring to the fact that the current counselor intern would be moved into, sort of, that position would be effectively eliminated as a full-time position.
The administrative intern.
And there is no counsel there at this point anymore. So is that?
Let me, well, let me clarify. Actually, Kathy, do you wanna speak to this, Sabney? Sorry.
Currently, Mitch Trina is a counselor who is also serving in an intern, admin intern capacity. So he's got a dual role. So one of the things when you have expelled students on a campus and Community Day Schools are designed for that, I firmly believe you need somebody who has a full administrative responsibility for all of those administrative things that I would have to drive across town to take care of. That's one of the reasons that the recommendation has been made, as long as we're just two classrooms, that we have at least a forty percent counselor. I firmly believe that we don't want to lose that counseling position. I think once we get to the point where, you know, if this thing grows and we need to go to that third classroom, then that counseling position needs to be fully restored. But, you know, we definitely need the counseling support. And of course, an administrator who has a counseling credential will continue also to serve in that counseling capacity as, you know, all of us do as, you know, when, when the time calls for it. But there's, you know, there's definitely an intent to keep the, the counseling capacity. And one thing that you brought up, Mrs. Harder, is the, you know, are there going to be kids in place? I know one of the concerns that Ms. Molina had with the seventh graders, if it's a year-long expulsion, it often takes a year and a half to get them through the whole, you know, process. So my thought is, you know, if we start late in this year, some of those kids are gonna be with us a year and a half and we're gonna be cycling kids. I, you know, I think once, once this starts, there's never gonna be a lack of full seats. I think that, you know, we, we always have at least twenty-five students sitting in those seats and they're, whether they're expelled students or not, they're definitely students that have behavior issues as well as credit deficiency. And so they need a smaller environment, they need a, you know, just a different place to be, a more nurturing environment, you know, lots of different kinds of reasons that they're with us. But they tend to, I, I don't think that there would be a problem, you know, sustaining that.
Thank you for reminding me of the realities.
Yeah, and, and again, it's, it, it has to do, my belief is it has more to do with lack of maturity than it has to do with, with much of anything else. And I think that's why they're having less success with them at El Puente is just because there, there is no light at their, at the end of their tunnel because they just, you know, high school is so far away for them that they just don't see, you know, there's no point for them. So I think that in that smaller environment, not only can we work with them more closely, but there's also not high school kids in the mix as well.
Right, and I think Ms. Molina really clearly communicated.
Right, right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could I just ask for a clarification? On the current position, it's counselor and administrative intern.
He is a counselor and an administrative intern.
Is there any delineation? Is it like point four counselor and point six administrative intern?
His full salary, he is, his, his base salary is as counselor. So his, all the add-on is administrative intern. So he's, you know, a hundred percent counselor and then his, you know, and then it's probably that, that six-fifth piece is, is the admin intern.
So essentially, it'd be putting in an assistant principal and a one-point-oh counselor would go to a point-four counselor?
Yes.
So that is something that needs to be discussed with the SBTA?
I'm not, I, I guess, I, that's why I didn't know how to respond. I wasn't quite sure what Mr. Wheeler was.
And that I don't know.
I would like to make a motion to approve the placement of district expelled seventh grade students at the Community Day School, pending negotiations with the SBTA about the existing counselor position.
I'll, I'll second, but can I amend it? Pending any necessary negotiations, because they may be unnecessary. Okay?
Okay. Your motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It passes five zero. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't know, I've seen a number of speaker slips go by for item F five and actually.
Yes, we're, we're gonna have to pull that F five.
I actually was gonna request that we pull item F five.
No, I was gonna say that.
I object to pulling F five, it's on the agenda. Public are here to talk about it.
We didn't.
I'm here to talk about it.
I'm not concerned about the, whether or not they wanna wait to make comment, but if they choose not to make comment and wanna wait until another time, I just wanna let them know so that they don't sit and wait if they don't choose to stay for their comment time.
So we'll have comment on F five, but we're, we're not going to take a motion because we, we're not gonna, we're probably gonna table it because we didn't finish the evaluation process.
We're, we're gonna meet in a closed session next Tuesday, tentatively, because we didn't finish the evaluation process, can't move on to.
To this part of it.
Madam President, I object to your interpretation. It seems to me the item being on the, on the agenda, and it is on the action agenda, that any board member would be free to make any motion she or he chooses.
I would think that, that it.
Then I will move, I will make a motion to remove item F five, but for any public commenters who wish to stay until that item would come up in the normal course of the agenda.
Second. All those in.
Can we, wait a minute.
Aye.
Wait a minute.
Oh.
Mr. Rogers? Can we remove an item? Any, yeah?
We do it at every single meeting.
But if it's, if someone objects, like a board member, can we remove an item? If somebody wants to talk on that item? I, as a board member, I wanna comment on that item.
Well, what I, what I heard was a, I thought I heard a motion made and approved by the board to.
We haven't, we haven't voted yet.
Okay.
I'm, I'm walking out. I think that this is a suppression of the rights of a board member to express himself.
You have the right to express yourself, I believe.
I will do so in the press, thank you.
When we get to F five.
When we get to F five.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Four, four with one looking like he's absent. Okay, you know, the adoption of board focus goals, it's gonna take us a while to deal with that. And I'm not sure we wanna, um. Okay, we go, do you wanna move it to the head, to the end? I was just wondering if I wanna move it to the end. Is that okay with Ms. Cordero? Is that okay with Ms. Cordero? If we move it to the end, when we know we have time, we can talk about it. We'll kind of have an ending time, and we can just talk about it then? And we move, I was, what I was... Fine with you? Everybody's fine?
Do you have any public commenters on the item?
Do we have any public comment on that item?
No, surprisingly, okay.
Surprisingly not. Okay, then we're on F3, and we're catching up. Approval of extension of Edgusoft.
And Robin Sowoski will give this presentation as well.
Okay, thank you. I think you're all well aware of Edgusoft in our secondary schools, and with a few rough beginning pieces, mostly around training with the teachers and how to use it, it's become a very effective tool, and our benchmark assessments are going very smoothly. We're getting some good data that we can look at, and teachers are actually using that to inform instruction, which is what we, you know, was always the reason we wanted to have a system like that in place. We are now looking at that for the elementary. We have talked with many of the teachers. We had, actually, our SBTA president with us at a conference where we talked about the use of that, particularly for our English learners, and evaluating their progress. And our last principals' meeting a week ago Thursday, we talked to the elementary principals, and they were unanimous in their desire to have Edgusoft in the elementary district. We're going to go forward in a slightly different manner, in that we're going to provide all of the assessments, we're going to, we're going to get them here in the district office, copied, ready to go, deliver them to the sites, give them to the teachers, scan everything here at the district office. Mike Vale in Cleveland School would like to, because they're also piloting GradeWorks report card and the electronic system with that, we are going to, and working with Dr. Davis Hayden, it looks like we're going to try to have scanners also at that school, and use, they are enjoying being a pilot program, a pilot school for that program. So we will use it that way at a site, just one site at a time, having the scanners. And we also are looking at that mesh between GradeWorks and Edgusoft in a very small way versus the whole school. Currently, well, when Edgusoft was purchased with secondary, there was no report card piece in place. Just very recently, Edgusoft purchased another product that has a report card. So we are looking very closely at, okay, do we want to go forward with GradeWorks? Because this is just a pilot, we're having two schools use it at this point electronically, or will the other piece that is with Edgusoft be a better product? And so it's very seamless. If GradeWorks can do it, and you don't even know you're in two systems, fine, that's great, we've spent a lot of time with that, and we can make that product work. But the Edgusoft piece is really about the assessments and data in the hands of teachers and principals. So we're making a proposal to go ahead with Edgusoft in the elementary district, and a K-12 system will be really nice.
Yes, I've spoken to a lot of elementary teachers that are jealous.
Oh. Actually, you addressed a number of the concerns that I had, having to do with how it's going to be physically executed. So that seems like you've put a lot of thought into solving that issue. I see the cost of the actual software. Is there a training piece? And how will we anticipate that expense?
Good question, and our training would, and I didn't put that in there, I'm sorry, training would come out of our Title II funding. We could present that and bring it forward in a more, in a package deal, and actually, in package deal, meaning that it could be more explicitly laid out in a timeline if you'd like.
I think you could probably put it on the consent agenda.
Okay.
I think the big piece is approving the software, but it would be, well, one might... I think these other folks would really love to see...
And I do too. Being one of those other folks, I think so too.
Should we just provide information in the board brief so that you all know what's happening?
I think that the consent agenda makes it much more explicit.
Well, only if you're ready to actually have us approve the funding for the training. I don't know if you're ready for us to, if you have it lined out under this point.
I do not have it exactly lined out.
So then maybe a timeline would be appropriate now, and then it'll come to us in the consent agenda when it's...
And some of it is because, oh, it looks like Davis wants to speak. As far as the training for the teachers, we'll be working, of course, with SBTA and the principals. We want to take as much off the plates of teachers in any kind of, you know, actually using it. They're just going to get the data at this point. So the training part is going to be so minor, it will be more so, you know, when we get going with the program. Davis, do you want to, Dr. Hayden, would you like to speak?
Yes, we actually already have someone that is going to be doing the training, Wayne Cole. And we also have, we just recently finally got my last staff member, and we're going to have one of them starting in the winter do training also. So we already have two people that can do training in the elementary district here. So I just want you to know that piece too. So I think we're ready to go ahead and purchase Edgusoft and get the scanners up and running and go for that, go forward with it.
And, you know, any training that would be an addition, we could use the Title II funding, of course, if teachers needed to have extra time after school or, you know, non-instructional time.
We have public comment on this, Mr. Lane Wheeler.
Thank you very much. I was at a conference regarding this, and I, the conversation came up at the end of the conference, was originated by Cynthia White as a potential way to resolve some information gathering questions that was put forth in that regard. And I, I don't know that that was fully, it didn't appear to me to be an idea that was fully developed when it was presented to the four of us who were there. Maybe in the, in the preceding month, that's taken place since then, there has been further development. But I have a stack of responses from secondary folks about that thick on my desk about Edgusoft and some of the issues that have been involved with it. And I realize that the training curve is one that takes some time, but training has certainly been an issue. And while there appear to be competent trainers available, it, there is a time issue. Right now, elementary teachers are dealing with a new report card, a new assessment system, and a GradeWorks program, all of which have had marginal success up to this point. And I have been hearing about how those things have impacted their ability to deliver instruction. So I would certainly caution that before we add another responsibility on, that we start looking at, at giving teachers time to do the thing that they do best, and that's the instruction of students. I realize the need to make sure that we have the data that supports how they deliver that instruction, but we are certainly pushing a number of projects out without really firmly developing any of those before they move forward. I know that there have been teachers involved in some of those other developments, but once again, the piloting process and the rollout have not been as effectively developed as I think they need to be. There are some hardware and software issues that have been habitual issues at the secondary sites, including the availability of those machines, when people get to use them, the ability of those machines to perform their functions that they need to do. I would also caution that when we are looking at potential mid-year cuts, the wisdom of saying, "We have money to do these kinds of trainings," I'm just not certain about the availability of funds at this level to sustain any kind of categorical programs. We know that those may, we may be experiencing those.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Once again, when teachers are required to do this training, and to have the hardware and software in their hands, it requires them time to do that. We have, I believe the district has made a very strong appeal to keep teachers in the classroom on a daily basis, which means then teachers are being required and requested to do this kind of training at some other time, once again, whether it's on a break or after school or in the summertime. So once again, that, all of that has an impact on the way this program gets rolled out. And I'm not sure that there's been full development of this process, so I would ask you to consider that when you make your vote.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I want to state again that this is very different than the secondary rollout, and that's why the training wasn't included in this, because there really doesn't need to be any training right now, and why I said the timeline would be good for future. The teachers at any site, and Cleveland has asked to do, have the scanners on their site so they could be working with it. If that's changed, we can change that. Literally, every principal in, that was in the room, I think we had one that wasn't there, in the elementary district, said they agreed to our promise that we will come to the site with the short assessment that each teacher will have, just like any other assessment, that's based on the standards, ones that they would be using, and they would give the test to their student, like test prep, excuse me, for STAR, and they would collect, they'd turn it in, and we'd take it to the district office, we'd scan it all, and we'd bring back to them the data with their class lists, you know, all of their class disaggregated out. This was something that teachers have been asking us for forever. They're not asking us for, I'm sure, another program to be on top of things, another training session to go to, and all of that. So we promised the principals, it would be as smooth as silk, it would be something they would be waiting for with that data. That's the only way we would put another thing forward. So that, I just wanted to add that, that the training piece really isn't even applicable right now.
Well, a timeline would, for the future, would be nice, but, I mean, I'm aware of the concerns on the secondary campuses of the Edgusoft rollout, and what you just described, and actually what you described before, seems to bypass all of those issues of scanners not working, and, you know, all of that, that kind of stuff, that it was a lot of human error, I understand it, but it's still really frustrating, and it wastes a lot of time. So assuming that that is not at play here, I'm willing to move forward.
Yeah, again, I just have to say, once again, this, elementary teachers have had so many things this year. New materials, new report card, new assessments, they have had lots of things. They just went through conferences. The last thing we want to do is put something else for them to do. This is, again, something they asked for, they want data, they really want to have more information on their kids, and so we do, we're doing all of the work.
I, I'm actually really concerned about it, because there have been so, there's so much turmoil around GradeWorks and the new assessments and the report cards in the elementary, and of course, the fact that they're going through an adoption process, and there will be two new adoptions next year. I love Edgusoft. I've seen how, what a terrific difference, what a terrific tool it is, especially at our junior highs. And I, I'm just really concerned that elementary teachers will be overwhelmed and won't buy into it because they've had such a difficult time with the report card process this, this start of this school year. I would prefer, I think, to see it as a pilot at a school that wanted it, like Cleveland, where we knew that there was staff buy-in, and then roll it out from there, but I don't know if that's possible.
It is possible. What we could do, as I said, every principal in the room said, "I'm in, I want that, my teachers want it." They have not gone to their teachers, I'm sure, and said, "Who wants to have Edgusoft? This is what it looks like. We can, we can pull this and go and do that, and see if it's, again, a pilot or, you know, given..." If you just say Edgusoft, I'm sure it's, a lot of teachers would go, "Oh, no, not another thing," not knowing...
What it is.
That they're actually getting what they've been asking for for three years.
Right.
Begging for, for three years, as far as data. So, I mean, this isn't something we have to do tonight, it's just something we wanted to get in place so that teachers could have the data as soon as possible.
I personally would prefer if the principals talked to their staff about it, and then it could come back to us after we get a sense of, because I know that the teachers that want it are going to be vocal about it, and are ones that have connections with the district. But I just don't know that I have a sense of, of where everybody is in the elementary districts, or, or not everybody, but if there's a majority.
That's fine with me.
So no motion, or...
I guess, I mean, I'm a little confused as to what they wouldn't buy into, since it sounds as though the...
Without, without knowing what it is. You go ahead.
I'm just saying, they're not having to do any additional work, other than distributing the tests, assuming that it's a fairly minimal time?
Yes, it would be very minimal, because we're doing a benchmark assessment.
So assuming that it's not taking a lot of time away from instruction, it's not a difficult test to administer, the teacher administers the test, and then basically doesn't have to do anything else, and then they get some information back of which we're, with which we're not requiring them to do any particular thing. So I'm not sure where the, where, what you don't buy into.
Well, I'm wondering if we can take the one intermediate step of having principals speak to their staff, in, in terms of, "These are the assessments that you've been asking for," not, you know, "We're going to implement Edgusoft," and see what kind of feedback you get, and maybe that would influence a board decision.
If we were to give them a choice whether teachers wanted to have this test in their class, is that, does that work? And they can do it if they want, and not do it if they don't want?
I think it would be more like who's in and who's out to pilot it, unless there's such overwhelming response.
I will need, I do need to add, and this is the part that Mr. Wheeler was at with our Title III action plan, in fact, a couple of you are going to be helping us with, as a stakeholder, in developing our action plan around Title III. We are required, we have a monitor coming in January and another one in March, we are required to track our, the progress of our English learners. This, to us, seemed like the easiest, teachers don't have to do anything. In the past, I've asked teachers to go back and compile their, their reporting on our English learners, they had to do it by hand, they had to add up all the ones and all the twos from all the report card. We don't have another system in place at this point.
But they could have a choice of doing it the old way or this way.
They could. This seemed like the way to get the data that we needed and provide that for students, I mean, for teachers as well.
Since we seem to be a little split, I guess the best thing is to just get the feedback and let us move on, because if it, if the teachers really do want it, they'll come back and tell us they do, and then we'll, I think, have a more unanimous vote.
Okay. Moving along here, we're on F4, the second reading and adoption of board policies and administrative regulations in the 5,000 series. So this is the 5,000 series that we had gotten to so far. We've already had a first reading. There are pieces within this, maybe Kiani could help me out here, but there seems to be pieces within this that we've already approved?
No.
No.
They went through the first reading, there were questions that were asked during that first reading, and that's why I, because of the time that had elapsed, I wanted to provide those answers so that you could refresh your memory and see the responses to the questions that you posed.
But there's things like the wellness policy that was kind of, the old wellness policy went out, and the new wellness policy has come in here. Is that correct?
That is correct. We discussed that, Ms. Sowoski and I discussed that, because there were more, CSBA provided a more recent version that included legal citations, and we just felt that that better addressed what we needed.
Exactly, exactly. But it doesn't match exactly the other portions, because some parts were taken out and some portions are added in. How do we want to do this? How do you want to proceed? You want to go by pages, by, you've got a few things you want to talk about?
Well, I guess I'm a little confused, because this seems to be a second reading on some, because we never got through the entire 5,000 series.
Correct.
This is the second reading on the, on the, sort of, the first half of it.
Because we couldn't, we knew we didn't have time to do the second half, and it didn't make sense for us to do a first reading of the whole thing.
So are we doing a first reading, are we addressing this as a first reading of the second half right now?
No, no, this is the first half.
This is the first half. We've seen all this before.
We've seen all this before, this is our second half.
This is simply to finish up on those part policies that you've already had a first reading.
On just the first part. So instead of the second reading and adoption of board policies and ARs in the 5,000 series, it's within particular numbers within the 5,000 series.
Correct. Do you want to go page by page? You want to...
I checked from my previous packet to what's contained here, and all of the changes that I had requested have been included.
I have the same statement to say. I went through page by page. And they were, thank you for the changes.
Well, no, no, I'm sorry, I was concurring with my silence.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, we thought we were waiting for you.
I'm happy to-
We're being so polite.
I'm happy to make a motion to adopt the specific board policies in the 5,000 series that are listed in attachment F4.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes four with one absent, Dr. Noel.
May I request a second motion? In fact, I want to, you know, normally, we would have the old policies, you would reject the old policies, you would adopt the new ones, and in this case, you're adopting new policies. I just want to make it clear that, that if these supersede other old policies, that they are to take the place of those old policies.
Okay. Move to remove the old policies that are affected by the adoption of these new policies in the 5,000 series.
Second.
And to approve the policies.
We already did that.
We already approved the new policies.
Go ahead.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four with one absent.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're on to F6.
Comment on F5.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I didn't realize this.
Okay, we have two public comments, Kate Smith, followed by Corey Breen.
I'm asking that before you renew the superintendent's contract, that you give the public an opportunity to evaluate his performance. I contend that his superintendency would not survive public scrutiny. Brian Sarvis has lost sight of the educational mission. Please allow your constituents time to present evidence of abuse of power. He is a Machiavellian. He is presently obsessed with retaliating against me. I ran for the school board to expose him, and he leapt at it. Everything happened 10 years ago. So I'm now submitting the documents from 10 years ago, when I ran for the school board. And I don't have time to tell you this stuff, but basically, when Kate decided to address her political concerns with the district through the political process, it was suddenly discovered, allegedly by the registrar of voters, without any involvement by the school district, that neither she nor her neighbors resided in the Santa Barbara School District. Given the fact that Gibraltar Road residents have long voted in Santa Barbara School Board elections, it is rather difficult to believe that the school district and county office were not involved in a decision to place ancient maps above longstanding and continuing educational practice. Moreover, it is striking that as soon as Kate decided to run for the school board, the district took a position with respect to the restraining order, which would presumably make it impossible for Kate to even attend school board meetings as a member of the public. Now, it goes on saying, "I believe that any tribunal which looks at this case will conclude that Ms. Dowell calls, what Ms. Dowell calls misbehavior, misbehavior, is hardly confined to Kate Smith. The silent treatment, the presentation of take it or leave it offers, the post-agreement revelation of highly unusual and appalling conditions accompanying those offers, unlawful delays and dishonesty, secrecy concerning educational programming are at least as counterproductive to the process of educational planning as raised voices and rudeness." And then she goes on to say that "It's hard to avoid the conclusion that the district is attempting to neutralize a political opponent through extreme threats and coercion." And then there's another letter after the district tried to do the same thing that Bonnie Switek did, which was, you know, the letters in the board brief, talking about harassing behavior, threatening, disrupting. She then said, "I wonder whether it's really in the interest of Santa Barbara School District to keep spending money on legal efforts to control Kate Smith's advocacy efforts. Santa Barbara School District needs to work on developing an adequate administrative structure-
Mrs. Smith?
...as well as, yes, I'll just-
Thank you.
I will just submit this and hope that you will give it to the, every board member, and to Brian Sarvis, so he can see he has stepped into a trap from which he will not survive."
Corey Breen.
Okay. Thank you. I'm an I doctor by trade in education, just so you know where I'm coming from. I did practice management and marketing for many years. I counseled large corporations on how to improve their circumstance, employ people, keep their employees, keep their employees happy, educate, et cetera. So I'm coming from a position of knowledge when I say, "Why are you adding one year to a contract which is only three years? We're six months into three year, six months into a three-year contract. You're already offering him another year. It makes no sense. You can't possibly have good evaluation knowledge of his three-year performance six months into a three-year contract, you just can't. And although he might have done a good job in the past, we're experiencing extreme turmoil with special ed right now. You have job turnover that is at a very high rate, and usually that does go higher, unfortunately, and I think it's time for an evaluation, which is why all the special ed people hang out and talk all the time. But six months into a three-year contract is no time to renew additional time on that contract, unless it's merely for some odd reason, like the board is somehow connected to him, and it gives him more security. But it makes no sense to the public why one additional year is needed at this time, six months into a three-year contract. I just don't get it. You cannot possibly evaluate his performance six months into his three-year contract, it's not possible. This should not be on the agenda, this should not be presented at this time. I don't see how you can justify it in any way, and I wish you had not taken F5 off, because I would have loved to hear the purpose of it, and, and then commented, that would have been much better for me. But I want to express my very much dislike of this. You, you have no reason for it, three-year contracts are standard, and then, you know, we're facing budget cuts, you have no idea how he'll perform in his job criterion six months into a three-year contract. So if you can comment, and I don't know if you can, can anyone tell me why one additional year is so important? Why not let the new board decide that? Why not give him some time to work on that three-year period that's already contracted? And as a person in the special ed world, and a mommy of one of these kids, it isn't working, it hasn't worked. I've only been in the district five years, and I think you've been the superintendent the whole time. It, it isn't working, it hasn't been working.
Thirty seconds.
And it's just been worse of late. So I'd very like to counsel you that this is unnecessary on any level, not legally necessary. Financially, it's a little bit irresponsible, too, you may have a better candidate three years from now that works for less, you don't know. So on a financial level, I don't see how it's beneficial. On a performance level, there's just no way you can evaluate Dr. Sarvis's performance six months into a three-year contract. Thank you. It has nothing to do with you, it has to do with your six months into a three-year contract. Why one more year?
I, I may, I, I'll make a, no, I'll just make a quick comment. The evaluation process isn't completed, which is why this action item was pulled. And I didn't request it, I didn't ever expect as a board member going off the board to be involved in the contract extension, because a contract was extended six months ago. So this board will complete the evaluation process, and I imagine that then it will be turned over to a future board, because I certainly will not be here.
If I can comment on that some way?
We don't, we don't have a discussion, I apologize, it's just not the format.
In case number 08, slash, nine, dash, one, two, I move that we approve the stipulated suspended expulsion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes four with one absent, Dr. Noel. Okay. Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. Let's take a break for a few minutes here, 10, 15 minutes? Chris, are we on? Okay. Ah, we're up two. I'm not ready. Not ready at all. Our conference agenda, request to speak to the board regarding the-
What about F2, are we going to go ahead and do?
Oh, when do, do, what's the board's pleasure, to do this now, or to just keep going and wait till, since we have, it looks like we're going to probably, yeah, we have G1, G2, and not, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm not even saying anything, go ahead.
Could we just go back to F2 and give it a set amount of time and see how far we get?
How's that, please, everybody?
Well, you've allocated 20 minutes for it, I guess my preference would be to, to consider the other items and go until, you know, 9:40, 9:50, and then go back to F2.
I like the idea of putting it at the end.
I like how far we go with the other items.
I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to start with G1, request to speak to the board regarding gang outreach workers.
It started as the truancy and parent accountability program. Children who were missing school were causing the district to lose average daily attendance, and that was a problem. So the truancy program was a plan to keep the children in school, but there was a problem because there wasn't really any engaging curriculum to keep the children there, or sometimes they had some learning disabilities, and rather than addressing that problem, the truancy program pushed them out into jail schools, which are, for example, El Puente. The students received twice the ADA as regular students, and it became quite a moneymaker for the county. And then with the struggling in-school students pushed out, the test scores rose. But with no child left behind, they had to keep that going. The struggling in-school students had to continue to be pushed out, so that the test scores would not be lowered by their poor performance. The gang task force is the truancy program on steroids, and your outreach worker is an intelligence agent, an undercover policeman, who is going to make the children into snitches. Now, snitching in the gang culture is dangerous, because it breaks the brotherhood bond and can bring down or annihilate a gang. So the retaliation against a snitch is violent. Drive-by shootings, rape of a sister, or robbing or, and beating a parent. So I'm definitely against the outreach worker. Now, on September 12th, at a joint conference between the Santa Barbara School Board and the city council, there was a gang outreach proposal presented by the city administrator. It was a PowerPoint presentation, and Dr. Noel pointed out that there is no strategy, things like, the strategy is to form a, a gang task force. The directive is, the city needs to serve as a convener to partner with others to address the community problem of gang violence. There is a focus, and you see it as a target. This outreach worker is to deal with only 100 targeted students, and 750 at risk of being gang member students. And what's so interesting is that it's a round number, although they, they have names, but it's 100 youth activ-, youth actively involved in gangs, 750 affiliated high-risk youth, but the total youth population is 16,972. Now that's a number I can get behind, but that 16,972 students will in no way benefit from the outreach worker. Now, when it was this proposal, the outreach worker was called the intervention specialist, but somebody found an outreach consultant in the pupil retention funds. Now this I want to talk about, because we already spend $850,000 paying law enforcement to be on our campus. So now we're going into pupil retention funds. Those are 11 programs, those are called categoricals, and you can't use those funds unless you're aligned with one of their programs. So Dr. Sarvis printed in the board brief a wonderful article about breaking the transmission of violence, and it talked about an outreach worker, and he put a big arrow by outreach worker! And when I discussed it, he was rather upset with me, because I said, "It's too bad you didn't read the article." It said, "The outreach worker cannot be a police officer. It has to be somebody who was a gang member, who can relate to the gang culture, and who they, who they will trust." There were many other things they said in that article, and it's a brilliant idea, and they're talking about taking it to Iraq to solve the problem of violence. But the outreach worker, well, the name was changed so that you could use an outreach worker from pupil retention, but you didn't read that it has to come under Educational Code 52890. There are qualifications for that outreach worker. One is that they have to have taken dropout prevention courses. Two, that they have to understand educational philosophy, and really be able to help retain that pupil in the school system. The truth is, that outreach worker that you're hiring has circumnavigated the personnel department. If you take a look at the personnel posting, which was only for 10 days, it was not from our department. Now, what I want you to understand is that there was a gang task force proposal from the DA's office to the board of supervisors, that had Bill Saroni's name all over it, it's the only time he'll let his name be used. And it talked about how he can deliver all of the superintendents and their school districts, and he even had a little chart, how much the schools are going to put into this. So he wanted the board of supervisors, and the DA asked that they approve administrative funds, hundreds of thousands of dollars to the DA. They called it a truancy program transition, and they didn't name the gang task force. But I'm a grant writer, and I know what they were talking about. There is a school politico-industrial complex. There is an unholy alliance between the schools, juvenile justice, and 47 nonprofits that are feeding at the- and 47 nonprofits that are feeding at the public funding trough. That money that was denied the DA is the money that was going to go back to the schools since the schools are now funneling millions of dollars into law enforcement personnel tit-for-tat. The DA's funds were going to go to the school superintendents for supervising an outreach worker that, in this proposal, it says it right here, there will be an outreach worker in every school in the county. Now, in the Carpenteria City Council, they are now writing an ordinance that will make it a misdemeanor for a youth to be on Carpenteria streets. Any youth found during the day, it's called a day curfew, can be detained, interrogated, and ticketed. And if they're a certain, you know, if they've had a certain amount of tickets or a certain amount of notes into their cumulative file, they'll be pushed into that pipeline sooner than you can say institutionalized racism. Now, I'm gonna go for the jugular. I have, how many minutes do I have left?
30 seconds.
Oh. I did print out something online about school practices that contribute to the problem of youth violence. In my attachments, I talked about how you can't have the outreach talk to students during school because they're supposed to be in school, not talking to that outreach worker, being targeted and made into a snitch. But if you would look at what the school does to cause youth violence, I think you would better serve our students. And the FBI is now online saying they are aware of school corruption at the same time that the ACLU, N double A C P, and the Children's Fund is working on the school-to-prison pipeline. The FBI is investigating school corruption, and we'll stay tuned for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have G2, discussion of development of a youth violence prevention plan.
Which we heard a little bit about.
Well, this has been on many agen- yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just gonna ask, since these indicate that they were asked for by Bob, since he's not present. Are we still going to address them?
I really don't feel like it's fair to do that. I know he would want to hear what's going to hap- you're gonna say and be totally participating.
On the other hand, he did have the option of remaining at the meeting.
But this was his, something that he put on the agenda, so.
May I just comment on the first one? And we'd be happy to move it forward to the next agenda. We've, this has been on a number of agendas. We actually are doing a number of things in youth violence prevention. And, you know, at a future meeting, I would like Robin to give you a more full, fuller accounting of the kinds of things that we're doing. Because the efforts that we're making now, we are reexamining. They may not be enough. We're looking at, for instance, the curriculum and how well we're delivering it, whether every student is getting it, whether we think there are other things that should be delivered in addition to that. And as you know, as I said earlier, this steering committee is in large part charged with the, this same issue, which is the development of a youth violence prevention plan. And I thought that's where the steering committee was going. But we will bring it back to a future meeting.
Was there any public comment on this or the G3? No, okay. Before anything else last said on G2? No?
Well, I was just gonna say that I think, um, when does the youth violence prevention committee meet, or task force meet again?
First of all, that's not what it's called, so.
I'm sorry, what is it, what is it actually called?
It was the Gang Outreach Worker Steering Committee.
Outreach Worker Steering Committee.
Yes.
When will it meet again?
Michael, do we have a date?
We don't have a date yet. The, there are two subcommittees that were formed at the last meeting. One is taking a look at the training requirements for the position. The other is taking a look at the evaluation for the program. Once we have those results, we will then convene the steering committee. And that probably will happen about the second week of December, but that date has not yet been finalized.
But we will make sure that it's a date that you can make.
Thank you, I apologize.
Since you're on the steering committee.
I was presenting at a conference, and that's why I couldn't be at the last one. But my question was really because I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to wait, since we have this information now that you gave us this list, I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to wait until there's further information from the committee before putting, bringing it back on the agenda?
One of the other things that the committee is doing is considering hires for outreach workers.
It was really clear to me in attending the meeting that at this point, that particular steering group is very narrowly focused on the outreach worker component. This is the larger picture. But I hope that if this could be put together, for example, as a pyramid of interventions, and there could be principal discussion around, is the curriculum appropriate? When is the teacher education going to happen, so on and so forth?
And we're already pursuing that, yes.
Great. Then, maybe if there's sort of a draft pyramid of interventions specifically for gang prevention and intervention together, of which, of course, the outreach workers are part, then it could all come to that committee in its next phase.
And I want to just comment on this list is, was a preliminary type of list. Our education department sat down with, actually, Mr. Lane Wheeler was in the room. We had a meeting, we meet regularly, and we sat down and just talked about, okay, what's going on in the schools? What are the big things that we know that pretty much every child receives? And then, some of the special programs that are out there. This is in no way a complete list. If we put it out to the schools, we'd have a lot more on here. But I think the idea of having it be a pyramid of interventions was what do all students get? And then, moving up to a more specified targeted list would be the next step to go with this type of component piece.
I apologize since I wasn't able to be at the last meeting. But my concern, and has always been with the outreach worker, as you know, I was an early-on supporter of this position, but my concern has always been to keep it from becoming sort of an enforcement position. So, I'm look, for example, I'm looking at the list here, and one of the things that I think is really needed in dealing with the issue of youth violence and gang prevention and intervention is something that values the student's home culture. And I don't see that, it may be embedded in some of these, that I'm just not seeing.
Like our World of Difference trainings, for example.
But something like that, where this, because what I'm, what I have constantly focused on is what I think we really need to do to prevent gang involvement is to connect the students to school. And we have some of these, but, you know, Avid, some of the after-school programs, but the, says what Travis Leadership Institution. But some of those are very, are focused, or targeted towards very specific groups of students. So, and they're very academically oriented, which, don't get me wrong, I love that. But I also think that we need something that focuses on, kind of going back to our school climate, focuses on the culture that the students bring with them to school, and how that is or is not valued, and how they feel like they do or do not become a part of the school culture. And I, so, I just think that needs to be included here somewhere.
Well, we, and as we build that pyramid and all, and I know we're probably starting to talk about this, and we shouldn't, because we're gonna talk about it later, we will be identifying the gaps. As Dr. Sarvis said, there, we could find that there are big gaps, and that's obviously one right there.
Thank you for the comments, though. That's really useful to us, thanks.
Okay. What was that? If nothing else, let's move on to G3. Is there anything before we leave that item and we'll come back to, or you'll come back to that item some later time? No, okay. Then, we're back to the adoption, or the board goal, focus goals, and we can spend some time on that. How about if we go until, we have, you have to come back for consent agenda, so until 10:15 or so, 10:15, or? Oh. Okay, let's see where we are in 20 minutes, that's fine. Maybe we could put up what we have so far? Or do we have anything there? Can we retype it?
I'm sure anything would be completely scribbled on at this point, but.
The one you gave me earlier, I put back on here.
Oh, is that it? Sure, sorry. I gotta find it here. It's the very beginning, isn't it? Okay, well, we're on to, I guess, unless we want to go back, communication. And I don't see a way to measure that yet, but.
Well, if you look underneath, in order to support these goals, the last bullet is provide customer service training tailored for school districts for district office staff. And would you want to include school site office staff? I guess it would depend on if we could afford it, that's my. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, my wheels are spinning, I'm sure as other board members are. We have had, I want, I would really like to keep a communication piece here. And the way we've dealt with it in the past is very often this, well, this statement under communication is fairly generic. The effort to support the goals is fairly specific. One of the communication pieces that we put into play last year was the e-news. I just don't know if there are other pieces that we would want to include under efforts to support the goals. Because I think that it's something that we should constantly be working on in, at various levels within the district.
And yet, it's hard to measure.
Well, except that providing training is one way to attack it. I just didn't know if there were any other thoughts about it.
Well, I, my initial thought, I mean, previous to this, but now I'm coming up with some other ones, was just that I think we need to include the board in that list. The district will improve communication between the district office, site staff, parents, and the board.
Well, I can throw-
And maybe even community. I think there's more, more, I think the board and the community are two groups that also need to be in that communication loop.
Well, how about for one of the ways to support the goals, all board members have a district email and link on the website? That's a good goal for O910.
If we're throwing out implementation strategies.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
I've advocated before that I think the board should meet on school sites periodically. And I'd like to reiterate that.
I think it's a good idea. I think it's a better idea if it's a community-focused workshop. I happen to be the person who always argues against it. And the reason why I argue against it is that when you're, when you're changing locations frequently, people get confused about where they're headed. You know, they don't know the location. And also, you're talking about setup. And some school sites lend themselves much better to a board meeting than other school sites. Having done it at Franklin School and at San Marcos, and I can't think where else, oh, Santa Barbara High and Santa Barbara Junior High. Boy, you know, with all respect to Franklin, it's a really multipurpose room with terrible acoustics, a buzzing milk machine, buzzing fluorescent lights. I mean, some spots lend themselves. And I think that if locations were examined in advance and then also meetings or workshops were more tailored to, for instance, a junior high parent population, or, you know, some particular topic that was of interest to that, rather than just wholesale moving a regular board meeting to a school site, and it might not really attract anyone from that school site, and it may confuse regular board attendees. So, I guess that's what I was going after.
Yeah, well, I didn't anticipate moving, you know, often. I mean, I had to-
I'm sorry, I was speaking hyperbole.
Yeah, because I think, I mean, the last four years, I think we've only done it twice. But in the four years that I've been on the board, we've only done it twice. But I would certainly like to see us do it more often than that. But I agree with you, there are logistics that have to be taken into account, and it might behoove us to have an agenda that particularly appeals to that particular school population or school populations that are close by. But I still think as part of the communication between, especially between the board and the community. But even the board and the school sites.
It sends a very powerful message that we're there.
I mean, if we're throwing out-
Suggestion.
Implementation strategies, I'd like to see is, you know, pursue-
At least one, maybe, for this year.
Maybe.
No, it's for O910.
For O910, yeah, I would say maybe one per semester.
So, are you talking about a special meeting or a workshop?
I'm-
So that we could really tailor it to-
My expectation that we might have, the way I was sort of imagining it is that it might be a hybrid, where we use the time to get some board business completed, but also have a significant portion of the meeting sort of focused on issues that are likely to be of relevance to that site. It could be just a type of workshop, or it could be, there might be issues that are particularly of interest to that site. For example, I'm thinking when we, you know, when we were talking about moving the academy to the Lacumbre Site, we maybe could have had the meeting at the Lacumbre Site. So, there might, there are often times where we're dealing with issues just as a routine part of the board agenda that are very pertinent to particular sites. And it might behoove us to have the meetings there if we can. If not, just maybe a workshop type for the, for the members to come.
I think it's a great suggestion.
So, the language would be, the board will have one meeting or workshop per semester at a school site?
Yeah.
I just think we need to tell Dr. Harder that there's gonna be a special meeting next Tuesday because I don't think Dr. Harder necessarily knows that yet.
You thought your wife, you thought your wife was off the hook, huh? So I think that if we add board and community, then I think the communication goal, I would agree.
Can, can we, can we, where would you put it? Between the board, district office, site, staff, parents, and community, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we considering the email?
I'm sorry, I thought that was a given.
Oh.
Yeah. All board members will have a district email link on the website.
And have it on there so they can access it at home. Of course, that makes no sense otherwise.
Of course, yeah.
But that's part of it. Okay, is there anything else here? Is there, I know, we could sit here and say, oh, yes, I'd love to have another goal of, you know, engaging students or special ed we could put on here. There's lots of things that we could put on here. And yet, are we at the end?
For me, I personally feel like that the, beginning the discussion on an updated strategic plan is all encompassing and includes that and is going to be huge. And also reviewing, just doing quick reviews of the other plans that we have in place, it's going to be very time-consuming. And so I feel like that includes a lot of the other issues.
Yes.
Well, and with, these are for oh nine ten. And with regard to special ed, that will be taking place immediately. So I think that one's a given.
Okay.
I just wanted to, to comment that we took off, that you did have, and I apologize, in all these drafts that I have, I can't find the draft that I'm looking for, that had, Ms. Parker, you had included, I can't remember the exact language, but something regarding a board retreat.
And I have to say that I personally don't want to wait till oh nine ten to do that. And so that's why I was kind of willing to keep this more streamlined. Because I hope that without that even being a focus goal, that that will be put in place.
Okay, great. I was hoping that it didn't get taken off our radar. Okay.
Well, it was only fifteen minutes. Now, what do we do with this now?
Can we approve it?
Can we approve it?
Yeah. I move to approve the board focus goals for oh nine ten as revised at this meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes four with one absent. You have board calls. Oh, my gosh. Okay, we turn to the consent agenda items. I don't believe that anyone here pulled anything off, although the approval of the minutes, I'd like to do that separately because I was absent, so.
Then I'll move to approve item E three, E six, and E eight.
I hear a second.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any, I was abs, I was abstaining because I wasn't.
No, we didn't, she didn't include E one. You can vote on this. It's E three, E six, and E eight.
E one is the.
We're doing E one separately.
I did not include E one.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were doing the E one all by itself. Okay, sorry. Then it passes four zero with one absent. Now do E one.
I'll move to approve item E one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes three with one absent and one abstaining. Coming events. Anything? More rain? No, board comments and correspondence.
Actually, I do. I have a few quick remarks that I would like to make. I'm sorry, it is early, so I'll go ahead. I just, I can't decide whether the last eight years of my life have been the longest or the shortest. And Kate always teases me. She never sees me get emotional. But I'm getting a little verklempt here right now, so bear with me. I wrote down a few, a few notes so that I wouldn't, wouldn't forget. Over the years, people have asked me if it's what I expected it to be. And my answer always was, was yes. It's been challenging, it's been stimulating, and it's been a lot of fun. But the best part for me has been building relationships with district staff, school staff, other policymakers in the community, parents, and students. And I really think that those relationships were the key to anything that I've accomplished personally as a board member. I want to thank everyone who works in our schools for providing services to our students day in and day out. Our teachers, Lane, I'm talking to you, for being the most committed and resourceful people on the face of the earth. Our principals, who work long days that require unlimited skills to juggle students and parents and families. And our classified staff, who support every aspect of student learning. And our superintendent and our district staff. You know, the popular criticism is that, that you're unnecessary to the educational process. But our schools wouldn't be able to open their doors in the morning without you. And I challenge anyone to, to prove that you are not necessary to this, this whole process. And finally, I want to thank my fellow board members. I've enjoyed working with all of you. I fully appreciate the risks and the rewards of putting yourself out in front of the community with the cameras rolling on behalf of our students. Like I said, I've learned a lot, I've had a lot of fun. I'm not going anywhere. And I hope to check in with all of you from time to time. So thank you very much.
I don't have anything prepared, but I do want to say one thing. That was, that was wonderful, but I just, I wish, yeah. I want to thank everybody as well. But there was one day where I was sitting in, in Santa Barbara Junior High and it was all the, being with all the students. And Susan, I hope you have this, this experience as well. And just seeing all the parents, there were parents there, there were teachers there. It was some, I don't even know what it was. I don't remember if it was a concert, what it was. But the feeling of being part of the community and how strong that is and how much pride I have in this community and the parents and the kids. And it was, it's just a wonderful feeling to be a part of that wonderful community and all the teachers and administrators and board members. And I'll just, I'm gonna leave with that kind of picture in my mind of sitting there. So thank you all for that opportunity, I appreciate it. And with that, is that it? Future agenda items, no?
I, I have a future agenda item. And that is a discussion of, bringing back a discussion about audio taping the closed sessions, specifically whether we should continue to, to tape-record personnel items.
Okay. And in the next meeting, we will have a, just a closed session next Tuesday. If it can be arranged around six o'clock, that would be ideal, okay? If that works.
And, and our December nine meeting will be our annual organizational meeting. We'll be electing a new board president and other things.
Okay, and with that.